Good morning. We'll call to order the January 29th meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll, establish quorum?
Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, February 1st at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices at this time.
Thank you very much. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
For your consent matters, items 1 through 46, and you also have an addendum item number 1, resolution congratulating junior achievement of Sacramento Incorporated on its 100th anniversary. I do have a few clerk notes. We are holding item number 4 till 2:00 PM. Approve the County of Sacramento and City of Sacramento Tax Exchange Agreement Regarding Panhandle Area Annexation in North Sacramento. I do need a motion to drop item number 10 and 11. This is the First Amendment to Lease Agreement for the Department of Probation at 9750 Business Park Drive in Rancho Pardova, and also the lease agreement for the Department of Child and Family and Adult Services.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. I also need a motion to continue item number 39 to February the 5th. That's the Dillard Road Bridge Critical Scour Project, HPB.
Chair moves.
Second.
Unanimous vote with those members present. That concludes the clerk's notes.
Any items of question for the board? Issues or motion?
Just had a question, comment to the county executive. Number 9 is the hiring for clerical people to handle PRAs. Do we receive so many PRAs that we have to hire three people to handle them all?
In environmental management, we do. What has happened in the past is that we're taking our field inspectors out to assist with PRA with clerical folks. That will free them up to go back in the field and do the inspections that we require.
So how many do we get a year?
I do not have that number. Do you have that?
Supervisor, I can get you the actual number. I can tell you, though, that EMD gets about half of the county's PRA requests each year. I think the board letter might have that number in it, but I can get it for you, the number that they actually get.
Thank you.
Comment on item 7?
Item number 7 is the resolution of intention to initiate a development agreement to support construction of distribution warehousing by North Point Development at the Metro Air Park.
Thank you. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Troy Givens, the head of our Economic Development Department, and Mike Penrose with Public Works. We had a thought a very productive meeting just yesterday with the Metro Air Park interests, and I think this item before the board today is yet another indication that I think things are going to start moving at a different speed, hopefully, for Metro Air Park, and we can start seeing more coming out of the ground out in that part of the county. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Move consent.
Motion, second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Item 47 is the 2018 Employee Giving Campaign Report Back.
About a microphone.
There.
Good morning, members of the board. Troy Givens with the Department of Economic Development. Excuse me.
Don't forget the check.
Forget my one.
Well, we seem to have a glitch with the PowerPoint, so we'll move through this. I wanted to first acknowledge a number of committee members that made this happen. As you're aware, before I go into the specifics of how much funds were raised, this culminates in really a month-long effort to raise funds by county members to support a number of various causes and nonprofits throughout the community and throughout the country, actually. And myself, who had the pleasure of serving as the chair this year, had Kim Latini, who was thrown into the deep end of the pool. She was a one-month county employee when she had this assignment and she came aboard, so it allowed her to meet a number of folks in the county and really understand about the work that the county does and then the generous nature of the folks that work here as well. So, thank you, Kim. We appreciate all the work. Chief Lee Seal, who was co-chair from the probation department, and with probation we also had Peggy Howar, Monica Lopez, Cindy Coy, and then Doug Sloan, who is here today, served as co-chair as well from the Waste Management Division, and Eric Vanderbilt, Melissa Schultz, and Catherine Kramer from Department of Technology. So, as I mentioned, this is a month-long event. It takes several months to plan in order to pull these things off. There are a number of events that take place, including a fun run, a golf tournament. We switched electronic systems to be more consistent with county executives' efforts to reduce paper, so we moved from a cash-free process and a paperless process. So, this group did a really tremendous job in advancing these things. And as I mentioned, the effort supports hundreds of worthwhile causes, from disaster relief to providing care for those who can't care for themselves, and a huge range of other very important items. As I had mentioned, we replaced our program here to a new program called Giving Matters 365. We went through a paperless process, and we hosted a 5K race that filled up in 48 hours. It was our most successful fun run in a number of years that we've had. It raised $24,000. It helped us kick off the whole campaign and really got us going in a very positive direction. What we're going to do going forward from this point is, we had a number of serious runners, folks that finished a 5K in 19 minutes or less. I almost didn't have time to go get a drink of water and come back. And then we have a number of folks that handled this in a little bit of a more of a Beta Breakers type of atmosphere, and they're dressed up as superheroes. And we have some folks that dressed up as a Pac-Man team, and so we had a number of fun participants. So, we're looking at breaking those two groups up to give those serious runners a chance to not have to weave in and out of our Pac-Man participants. So, this year, we raised $273,000, a little over $273,000. We had an ambitious goal of raising $300,000. We fell slightly short of that. I feel if we had another week of an extension, we would have made our goal. But I think next year, breaking these two parts apart on the fun run goal will allow us to hopefully reach that goal. So, we have a very large cardboard check that represents the amount here of the funds raised in total by our county employees, and these are above and beyond, obviously, the jobs they do on a daily basis. So, I think they deserve a round of applause, obviously, when it worked through this process.
Troy, why don't you tell us the amount that's written on that check? Is it small print?
$273,024.
That's a lot.
I just want to point out, Troy, that your name is on that check, Troy.
It is. So, that's why it's large and made out of cardboard. It won't cash easily. Let's see if I can advance this. You can see the breakdown here. We had, the bulk of this comes from pledges, the 5K walk-run and department fundraisers. The board's office had hosted several bake sales and other things that all go to contributing towards this. We had a very successful golf tournament this year that raised almost $54,000 for a specific charitable contribution as well, and, as I had mentioned, over $273,000. When you break it down, we've had a number of departments that have been participating at a high level for a number of years. If you look at the middle column for 2018, in Tier 1, where we had 1 to 99 employees, county council has again led that column in the number of contributions, and we have the county clerk recorder coming in a close second. In Tier 2, we have the public defender's office, who always participates at a high level as well, and the assessor's office. And then in 2018, the sheriff's department, once again, participating at a very high level, and DHA as well. So, I'd like to kind of throw the challenge out to other departments to try and raise their game up to this level and help us meet that $300,000 goal going forward. And just on a fun note, this is a photo from the fun run participants here. This is the Pac-Man team. You can see in the background with the folks with the capes that we had a superhero team and other folks. So, as I had mentioned, this is a very fun event. It's a fun way to get people involved and help contribute to these charitable organizations that are doing such great work in our community. So, with that, next year, I'd like to hand the mantle to Chief Lucille, who will be serving as the chair of this process, and I'd like to thank everybody who participated and thank the board for their support. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Well, thank you not only to all of our generous employees, but thank you, Troy, for the extra effort you put in this year. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you. It was a pleasure.
We have a small gap. Do you want to take up your vote sheets?
Yes, I do.
That would be a picture.
Oh. Photo with the big check.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody down there?
Just the chair.
Just the chair, it's fine. Thank you.
Thanks, Troy. I appreciate it. Okay. We were going to go to appointments, but Supervisor Nativi's running late, so we will put that off until he returns.
So, you'll need to take a recess.
We have a 15-minute recess there. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Supervisors Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Serna?
Here.
Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you.
Item number 48 is the authorization to execute multi-year agreements for processing of single-stream recyclables with California Waste Recovery Systems in the amount of $94,893,172.62 and Recycling Industries in the amount of $7,214,446.81.
Okay. Sir.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Chairman Kennedy, members of the board supervisors. Thank you for granting us some time this morning. I'm very pleased to be here. This item today is the culmination of the last couple of years of a lot of uncertainty in the recycling market and a couple of lessons learned, which I will get into. I'd like to take you back in history a little bit, go back to 2006. We were before this board for the approval of two recycling contracts to process the curbside recycling material. They were seven-year contracts with some extensions. They were fixed contract, meaning that there was no revenue sharing on the market side for the commodities. The market changed a lot between 2006 and 2013, when the contracts ended. We went through and analyzed the market, realized that we were leaving a lot of money on the table, issued some RFPs in 2013, ultimately selected two vendors, again, local vendors, and they were market-driven contracts. So, as the price of cardboard, paper, plastic, those materials went up or down, we shared in that extra revenue. Both contracts also had a floor price, so both contracts had $15 per ton floor price, so we were guaranteed not to lose money on the process. Along in 2014-15, China changed and started enforcing their national sword, which we've been before the board and talked about. It was the contamination in the recycling materials being shipped to China, essentially cutting off all of the material flow into China, caused some great havoc within the recycling markets. We ended up terminating both of those two contracts in 2017, and since then, we've worked on a series of short-term contracts that included local vendors but have included a couple of vendors outside the area. And we found in this process that, number one, vendors outside the area with small volume were not very reliable for us, and, two, the biggest issue we needed to overcome was we needed some long-term facility capacity, someplace that we knew we could take our material to for significant timeframe. So, we went out in 2018 for RFPs, since we did some outreach with the vendors, what would you like in contracts? Ended up receiving two bids that are before you today. One is a 10-year contract with two 5-year renewals, and one is a 3-year contract with three 1-year renewals. Essentially, we are guaranteed to have market space now if we exercise all the options for 20 years, which is the real goal of what we were trying to accomplish. It does have a couple of outs. If there's changes in the market, these are market contracts, so if, for some reason, cardboard and paper and those prices went back up, we would share in that revenue, our costs would come down. So, we're asking approval today for those, and I have, both of the vendors are in the room if you have any questions for us.
Okay. Is there any questions of the board? I have no public comment. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Item 49 is the update on the implementation of the Voters Choice Act.
Good morning.
Morning.
I have a PowerPoint as well. Good morning, members of the board. Courtney Bailey Canelas, Registrar of Voters. Thank you very much for this opportunity to brief you on the big year we had in Sacramento County regarding changes to elections. As the largest county in California that adopted the Voters Choice Act, today, we're going to be going over the highlights, some of the lessons learned, talking about the equipment, and, of course, a lot of the details and statistics will be found in the accompanying board letter, but we'll definitely go over the highlights and then have time for questions or suggestions. So, in 2017, the members of the board approved the adoption of the Voters Choice Act in Sacramento County. The goal of this was to increase voter turnout and also improve the use of county resources in supporting elections. We learned that the majority of voters already voted by mail, so this was kind of a way to modernize the election process to accommodate those voter preferences. In 2014, Sacramento County and the state of California had a historic low voter turnout. We can see here in the maps where the areas that are blue had under 20% voter participation. In 2018, in November 2018, we had historic high voter turnout for a midterm general election in Sacramento County. And we can really see where the areas have changed to nice gold to deep orange color that increased the turnout throughout the county. So, we saw historic high turnout in Sacramento County. Of course, turnout can be attributed to many factors, including the current political environment, what's on the ballot, but the ease and participation of how the voters chose to vote signified to us that this new model encourages voter participation and turnout. Of the voters that voted in both the June and November elections, 94% of them chose to vote by mail. Now, that means that they used their ballot that they received in the mail. How they returned it is a few different options that they have. So, in November, that was a total of 492,373 ballots that came back either through the mail or at one of our drop boxes or dropped off at a vote center. And you can see here where folks actually preferred to drop their ballot off at a dropbox or a vote center than even return it by mail. So, that was interesting for us to see how the drop boxes, which we had 53 throughout the county, how they were utilized. So, it was great to see the use of the drop boxes. So, a total of 6% of the voters actually chose to vote in person at one of the vote centers. And at the vote centers, you could get a replacement ballot, and they really replaced those traditional election day-only polling places. So, in November, we had over 30,000 voters turn out to vote at a vote center, and most of them did come out on Election Day. Those voters, for the first time ever, chose to actually vote using one of our new touchscreen devices, where voters could actually mark their selections on a touchscreen and it prints out a paper ballot versus bubbling in the oval. So, we had a lot of great feedback. Over 40% of the voters chose to use those touchscreens, and we received positive feedback on the use of those machines.
Forty percent of the 6%?
Correct.
Okay.
Forty percent of the 6%.
Just wanted to be clear on that.
Yeah. So, for November 2018, this is just to give you an idea of what locations voters chose to vote at. So, in the past, voters were assigned to one location on one day. When voters had the choice on where to vote, they overwhelmingly chose to come out at community centers and the Sacramento Public Library locations. So, South Natomas Library was the busiest vote center. We also had Citrus Heights City Hall, which was the only vote center in this top five list that was open for 11 days. So, the rest of the vote centers on this list were open for four days, the weekend before the election, Monday, and then Tuesday, 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. So, it's just to give you an idea of where the voters chose to actually vote in person. Our department created vote center experience surveys that were specific to what the voters felt about their vote center experience, so not for the vote-by-mail voters, and we received in June, 361 survey responses, where 69% were very satisfied with their vote center experience. Some of the dissatisfaction came from confusion over what a vote center was, and also the fact that folks, there were a few folks that were upset about not having their regular polling place. We also got the feedback of wanting more signage. So, in November, we made some changes to specify what services were available at a vote center, what was available at a dropbox, and also provide more signage in and around the vote centers. So, in November 2018, of 517 surveys, it brought our satisfaction rate up to 80% were very satisfied. The dissatisfaction rates in November came from the election day lines and traffic congestion at some of our vote centers. A big part of the Voters Choice Act is community engagement and outreach. It's educating on these new changes. And our department, along with several community partners, went out into the community, visiting several locations, senior facilities, resource fairs, community events, in order to get the message out of the voting options and the changes that are coming. So, this just gives you an idea of all the things our department and our community partners did, including different media, where we reached out to Spanish radio stations, and also publications that reached our Asian-American communities. The big thing with this new model was the adopting, not only the new model, but acquiring a new voting system to support this model. And this is really where our department received help from the Department of Technology to make sure this happened with real-time access to the voter file. This is to ensure that any voter could visit any vote center and verify right there in real time that they didn't already vote either by mail or at another vote center. With the purchase, we also acquired new ballot tabulators that scanned the ballot image and allows us to review the ballots to make sure we are able to determine voter intent before it gets added to the final results. In the past, this was a manual process where we would review every ballot, and this actually cut our labor time in half for the adjudication process. We refer to it as adjudication. We also purchased a new accessible ballot marking device, which is the touchscreen. There was a minimum of three at every vote center. Some vote centers had more, and this is where the voters enjoyed marking their ballot on the new touchscreen. The mobile ballot printers was another piece of equipment that we acquired that we could not do this new model without. This allowed us to print any ballot type or any ballot style for any voter in the county. So, even if you lived in Out Grove, you could get your correct ballot type at a vote center in Folsom. The accessible vote-by-mail system allows voters with disabilities to be able to mark their ballot at home using their own assistive technology, print it out, and send it in. This was a new requirement under the Voters Choice Act. It has since become a state-wide requirement for all counties regardless of whether or not they decide to adopt the Voters Choice Act. So, we were ahead of the game on that one. Also, we acquired a new Election Day Help Desk, which helped us to determine where the questions were coming in regarding this new voting model, where the confusion was, basically how better to support the voters, and what was happening at the vote centers on Election Day. This allowed us to make substantial changes between June and November in order to improve the voting experience overall and work on addressing issues in the future, and we are still reviewing the November election day logs. So, future improvements, things we're going to be looking at moving forward, we have the March 2020 primaries. So, the primaries have now been moved to March, so that alone is going to take a deal of outreach and education on the messaging of that change. With the other messaging, we definitely want to encourage voters to vote early, to use those days at the vote centers where there was hardly any traffic, to get people out to vote in person, drop off their ballot early, so we can include that in the election night results. So, we're going to continue on the messaging for that. We also are going to elaborate on the voting options, again, the services available at the vote centers, and also the line control. So, when we get into the vote centers themselves, a lot of our, especially our libraries, there were lines, and there's traffic congestion in the parking lot. So, we're going to be having more people out there to accommodate people just dropping off their ballots, working on line control layout, and looking for facilities with more space and more parking. In addition, external drop boxes, that we only have in Sacramento County, one box that is outside our main office in South Sacramento, where you could drop off a ballot 24 hours a day. We are currently working with other cities and a few other county offices about the possibility of using external drop boxes at their facilities to hopefully get more around the county, because that definitely was the popular use. We will also be using some money that we are getting from the state for a cybersecurity review, making sure that our process stays secure, that voters are able to update and access the information in real time by also maintaining the security of our process, and also, the big one, the vote-by-mail processing. As a majority of the voters decided to use their vote-by-mail ballot, it takes a long time to verify and determine the eligibility of those ballots, so we are looking at solutions on how to speed up the process but also maintain the accuracy of the process. And so, something to look at moving forward, too, is the fact that effective this year, the state has required that we pay the postage on returned vote-by-mail ballots. So, it will be interesting to see what impact that has, if that changes voter behavior as far as whether they decide to drop off their ballot or decide to use the postage paid. So, it'll be interesting to see the trends as that gets into place. So, that concludes just kind of the brief overview of how things went in 2018. I'd like to go ahead and open it up for questions, suggestions, concerns.
Mr. Serna?
Great. Thank you, and thank you for bringing us what I think is mostly good news. I wanted to have you scroll back to the maps comparison, if you could, please. So, this kind of tells the, you know, best part of the story in terms of the turnout that the county... that the county enjoyed in the 2018 general versus the 2014. But as you can see, it really kind of is very obvious that, I don't know if these are precincts, I don't think they are, it looks like the geographic units are a little bit bigger.
Census tracks.
Yeah, so the one census tract that is still at or below, what, forty percent turnout, it looks to be the South Natomas River District, North Gate area there. And you'll recall that, leading up to the election, we had some advocates in these chambers that were encouraging the board to consider more and better outreach as it relates to, especially homeless population that occupies various shelter service providers in and around the River District. And I'm just wondering, A, whether or not you think that the fact that we have this one census tract that includes that area is attributable to perhaps not having had that outreach and having some registered voters that just didn't maybe have the education on the new protocol involved with the Voters' Choice Act, and whether or not there is an opportunity, B, to, in the next cycle, perhaps do a better job of both outreach and accessibility for those that are unsheltered in that part of Sacramento County.
I think there's definitely an opportunity to reach out to the voters specifically in that area. We did, before November, we did a large registration drive over two days at the Loaves and Fishes facilities, but I think we can do a better job of reaching out to the other locations in the surrounding area. A couple weeks ago, we actually had a team go out to survey Loaves and Fishes to see if it could serve as a vote center. They did not have a space that met the accessibility requirements. However, we have decided to put in a ballot drop box at the location for future elections. So we can educate on going out, registering people to vote, letting them know a ballot will come to them in a mail, and we'll have a receptacle for them at the Loaves and Fishes facility.
What are, I'm curious, what are the accessibility issues?
The only space that they had that was over twenty by twenty feet, which would be the minimum space we could use a vote center, was upstairs. There was no elevator. There was also excessive slopes and cross slopes along the path of travel.
What about using a space that is perhaps not necessarily owned and maintained and operated by Loaves and Fishes, but might be very near Loaves and Fishes? There's a fire station over there, for instance. Seems to me that there's a lot of other opportunity where you would have those minimum space requirements met that can serve as space for a, an opportunity for folks to actually, you know, participate in the voting process.
Okay, that would be great. Yeah, we can continue looking at possible locations in those areas. And if you have specific ideas, please feel free to let us know so we can go out there and survey. That'd be great.
And then, one last question about this census tract, since it's the only green one on the map on the right there. Do we know whether or not, in addition to perhaps the fact that there are a number of folks that are unsheltered in this area that maybe did not have an opportunity to participate in the election, do we know whether or not that is why it's necessarily green? Or do we think that the voter turnout was low in those residential portions of North Gate and South Natomas? I think this deserves a little deeper dive to understand why is that the only green area in the entire county of Sacramento that shows something less than forty-one percent turnout?
That's a good question.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Frost.
I want to thank you and your staff for the great job that you did with your outreach and educational campaign.
Thank you.
I think there were some folks who complained because they didn't understand it, but I don't know if you can start, make such a drastic change to something and not, and have it, I don't know how you have it go as smoothly as you executed it. So I want to congratulate you for that, and I also want to let you know that, and you may not, I don't know if you were here or if you remember when we were first voting on the Voters' Choice Act, but my district was, did not want to make the change. But since that time, and since we've had a couple of election cycles, my district has, in the surveying of my district, they have changed the way they feel about it, and they're liking it. So I wanted to report back and let you know that it seems like it's going well in District Four. And I also wanted to ask you, if the number of vote centers is mandated, is there a minimum number of vote centers that's mandated by state law? Because it seems like there were a lot of vote centers that were not utilized, and we could use a lot more drop boxes, but maybe not full-on vote centers with employees and equipment there?
Yeah.
Is there a way we can shrink that and grow the drop boxes?
There is a minimum that we have to provide, one eleven-day vote center for every fifty thousand voters, and then one four-day vote center for every ten thousand voters. So for Sacramento County, that was actually about seventy-five, but we bumped it up to seventy-eight. But we agree that some were, there were hardly anyone that came out, and then others were packed.
Maybe we need to move them.
That's what we're looking at this year, is looking at alternate locations that might better serve and make it, like the libraries, people love the libraries. So that was interesting for us to see where they actually preferred voting. And then also, we agreed just with the number of people actually using their vote-by-mail ballot, looking at additional drop boxes as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. Good job for your first round at this, Courtney.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions on the cost of this type of election compared to the now, I'll say, the previous way we voted. How do the costs compare to the county?
So right now, they look about comparable for actually conducting the election. Of course, we did have the voting equipment acquisition and other implementation costs, new signage, that sort of thing, which put us, which we spent some extra money on. But when we look at actually items that were charged specifically to the election, it's very comparable. And so it will be interesting, too, moving forward after kind of this first year and going into a presidential election cycle, to see how those costs kind of even out. So right now, it's pretty comparable. I wouldn't say there was cost savings, but it's right on track.
How much do you think the postage cost will be?
Ooh, good question. So if we use the business reply mail versus first-class, there's going to be some costs there. If it's about, I mean, it could be between a hundred thousand and two hundred thousand. I would say two hundred thousand would be the max is what we're looking at right now, just looking at voters preferring to drop off their ballot.
Be interesting to see whether that makes a difference
Yeah.
in people using the drop box or mailing the, putting the mail.
Right.
So then, as we talked in briefing, what is your plan to reduce the amount of time to report the results of the elections, which stretched out to a period of time I think people weren't really happy about?
Sure. So with the vote-by-mail process, it takes longer to verify the eligibility of the ballot before it actually gets tabulated and added to the final results. With a majority of people using their vote-by-mail ballot, that took us quite a bit of time. And that is also something that is not unique to Voters' Choice Act counties. That is common in other counties where a majority of people already choose to vote by mail. So I know that is something that, as a state, we are looking at as well. As a county, we are looking at how to better utilize our resources, our staff personnel, as well as equipment, in order to improve the process, but again, still maintaining the accuracy and verifying and checking for eligibility.
Okay, I think it would, assuming we don't make much progress on that before March next year, it would be a good idea to communicate with the people who are running for election and the media and others you might think of, about the length of time it's going to take. So we don't have breathless anticipation of declaring a winner by ten o'clock on election night, and it really takes two weeks.
Right. And that is a great point, to where even if we expedite the process a little bit, there's still not going to be those election night results with basically two factors, the vote-by-mail process taking longer, and also the increase in voting opportunities for people to get their ballots back if something was wrong with their signature. We also accept postmarks. So all of that will delay the process without knowing who's going to be the winner election night. So I think to set those expectations is very important, so that's a great point.
And I want to say, I thought your, the website was good on election night, but as we mentioned in briefing, that I think there's some improvements that could continue to be made. I thought it was easy to read, but still hard to find.
Easy to read, hard to find. That's good, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Tolle.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chair. Courtney, thanks for your report and the update, and a couple of comments and a couple of questions. One, certainly want to thank you and your staff for your, you know, good work, your hard work. I know that we had a number of community members that were engaged leading up to the election, and certainly want to acknowledge that as well, to help with that voter outreach, and I know some of the folks in the audience today, and certainly want to thank them for their ongoing efforts to, I think, one, advise, and certainly to ask questions, and to, I think, push us a bit to be sure that we did everything we could to encourage voter turnout and certainly maintain the integrity of the election process. One question I had, though, was, so the map that's up on the board, what are the blank spots? Because some of, if these are census tracts, then there were areas that were, I understand there's areas that may be very short on registered voters, but there's some inconsistencies here, so what's going on here with this map?
So it is based on the turnout of registered voters. So the smaller the area of registered voters, like if we were to look in the Delta area, the fact that it's a deep orange doesn't signify a bunch of people came out, it more signifies.
But what about the white spaces? What's that signify?
Oh, sorry, no one lives there.
Okay.
Those are areas of land.
That's not exactly true.
Uh, yeah, that's not exactly true. I would defy that.
Oh.
There are people who live there, I don't know if you, there are people.
Registered voters? Okay, I can look into it.
Yeah, well, let me point out, if you look into kind of the lower center of the map, where you see there was orange in the, I guess in the June election, and then you look at, or in fourteen, and then now it's all white space, it's a lot of Kasumis there, and it's all white. We haven't depopulated the area, there's still folks that live there. So I guess I'm kind of curious as, and, you know, some of the white space shrunk in some areas, some areas that would, you know, it filled in, and so I guess I'm curious as to the data here.
Okay.
And it may not be significant, but, yeah, but when I see blank spaces, and to your point, nobody lives there, even at Mather.
Yeah, I thought there were some where there were no registered voters, but yes.
Maybe no registered voters, so maybe registration fell out, I don't know, but I just, I'm kind of, I'm curious.
Supervisor Tolle, we can look into, but what Courtney's alluding to is particularly one border by Folsom, that's just a big tract, that's just property holding, might not have registered voters in it, but we will look into the areas more in your district to make sure that if there are registered voters.
Along the Kasumis there.
Yeah, we'll pick those up. But that's what Courtney's alluding to, is that those are gigantic tracts, but not folks, might be folks living there, but there might not be registered voters.
Yeah. And again, but the area I was pointing to was an area that showed good turnout, it was orange in the previous, and now it's blank.
No, I caught that.
Okay, all right. The other thing I wanted to ask about, and thanks for that, was that we had some discussion, it's not included in today's report, and we didn't go with it this time, but was whether we were going to have a mobile voting station that we would, you know, allow, because the ties with the computer, and obviously that has some costs associated with that, but to the question that Supervisor Cerner asked earlier, but I think generally, you know, what the practicality would be, and I guess some analysis around that, whether, and I don't know what other communities are doing, but it may be a way to get some folks, again, over a course of several weeks, and assuming that, you know, we had sufficient staffing and, you know, all the things that go with the, you know, with the, you know, ballot types and so forth, I assume you can load all that in, that's what we were able to do. And so I guess I'd like to have us, before we just no longer have that discussion, talk about that mobile vote center in areas where we've seen certain improvements but are still finding some challenges. Maybe that's one other way, to get there either after hours or on weekends, again, recognizing there are costs associated with that, but I'd like to see some analysis around that, because it seems to me that that might be something that would be.
I would just add, I guess the first question would be to understand whether or not there's anything in statute that keeps us from implementing a mobile vote center. I don't think there is, but I, you know, I don't know.
Good question.
With the law around the Voters' Choice Act that precisely, so that might be the first question for you to have County Council ask and answer.
Thank you.
And I think that, you know, done, you know, right, it could be one other way to get the message out. I mean, it can be, you know, a mobile billboard, voter, you know, VRE, and, you know, obviously Election Day, there's ways you can, you know, wrap vehicles and do it in a practical means. And maybe, again, use some of the connectivity to sites that we looked at that may not be open on certain hours, but nonetheless, I did want to take a look at that, because we talked about that initially, didn't do it for the last two election cycles, and I think it ought to be something that the board at least gets a chance to talk a little more about before we, you know, determine whether we're going to do it or not going to do it. So, and lastly, I would just say I think it is encouraging to see the improved turnout and people exercising, you know, their right to vote, and I think that it's very encouraging to know that this is making a difference. And again, I credit all the folks that have been supportive, and certainly folks for their patience, because Supervisor Frost said that there, I'm sure there was some hesitancy, I heard it from folks as well, and about, you know, how this was going to work, but I think certainly over the, you know, the course of the primary and the general this past year, I think it has, you know, proven that we can maintain the integrity of the election process, we can see some efficiencies, but also improve access and participation, which is really grand in my view, so, thanks.
Great.
Supervisor Cerner.
One last question. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but was it the last election cycle where we had, for the first time, the legal ability for folks, is it age sixteen to eighteen, to pre-register?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any data, maps, for instance, on where that was occurring most in Sacramento County?
Yeah, we could definitely get some maps with the data. I know we were the third-largest county in the state with the highest number of preregistrants, which was really a credit to our outreach team going out to all the Sacramento County high schools. So we could get some maps and share that with the members, for sure.
I think that would be helpful to understand perhaps where we need to maybe focus our efforts, educational efforts, where there might be, get some gaps that that map, you know, might identify.
Yep. All right, Chair.
Thank you very much. Courtney, you stepped into this role at probably the most difficult possible time, and you've done a fabulous job. Congratulations to you and your staff. I will tell you that personally, I did not receive one complaint this year, and considering we were doing something so outside the box, that's highly commendable, so thank you.
Great job.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Next item.
Item fifty, consider the installation of always-stop signs at the intersection of Simmerhorn Road and Cherokee Lane.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. My name is Lou Lee from Department of Transportation. Today, I'm here to request the board to consider the installation of always-stop sign installation at the intersection of Simmerhorn Road and Cherokee Lane. Simmerhorn Road and Cherokee Lane intersection is located just outside of City of Galt. Both, you know, both roads are straight and flat, rural roads. Cherokee Lane has existing stop sign and advance warning sign in both directions approaching the intersection. The intersection's adjacent land use consists of rural housing and agricultural uses. The intersection was evaluated for always-stop sign based on the standard engineering warrants in the California Manual of Traffic Control Devices. Based on the evaluation, both Simmerhorn Road and Cherokee Lane do not have enough traffic volumes to meet the requirements. Also, the intersection does not meet the warrant for accident history that we see from CHP reports, although there was a fatal accident occur at the intersection in 2017. Since the standard engineering warrants for the installation of an always-stop control were not met, staff does not recommend additional stop sign at the intersection. However, the board may consider other non-technical factors, such as community input and roadway characteristics in reaching a decision. Department of Transportation anticipates the stop sign installation would be approximately two thousand dollars and is included in the department's budget. This concludes my presentation and can answer any questions.
for their review and investigation. They're always very thorough. And I did ask to have this moved forward. I've certainly been familiar with the intersection for many, many years and over time, I think certainly Lou has pointed out, they do look at CHP reports for reported accidents. And they actually did a, a look back for 10 years. I'd asked him to go back further than that because I'm aware there have been a handful of fatalities over several decades out there. This is actually, in my recollection anyway, the third time that, based upon some input from, from residents and others that we've requested the stop sign there. It's been, been a two-way stop for the Cherokee Lane, the north-south direction for many, many years. I do want to point out for my colleagues, a couple of items. One, we're seeing changing traffic patterns as we are throughout the county as people look for other ways to get in and around into their destinations. But one of the things here that I think is a critical factor is that the city of Galt, as we're well aware, has continued to grow on the west side of, excuse me, east side of Highway 99. And we're seeing more and more folks that are moving to and from the Liberty Ranch High School, but certainly residential subdivisions. And actually, they annexed out to Cherokee, at least the northern portion of, of this area, just in this past, past calendar year. I do want to take the opportunity, if I could, to, and I did send some correspondence to my colleagues and through the Clerk's Office that we received from three area residents. And if I could just read into the record, because I think it goes to this, to the issue of standard engineering warrants and, and I think some of the traffic behaviors, the motorist behavior we're seeing out in the rural areas. And I'm going to just read a couple of paragraphs here. I won't be long. The lady writes in, "My name is Karen. I've lived in the Galt and Harold community for my entire life. I'm a mother of four children who are extremely active in the community and to say that we live in the car would be an understatement. One year ago, my life changed in an instant. As I drove down Simmerhorn Road, as I do eight to 15 times per week, taking my children to the activities in my la, and in my last weeks of pregnancy, a fatal, life-changing accident occurred completely out of my control. The other driver, whom was also known to be a very regular driver on our country roads, ran the stop sign at Cherokee at Simmerhorn. My son Wyatt, 10-year-old, in the passenger seat, was in the passenger seat as we hit the car and slammed all of us into the side ditch and was sadly also the first to recognize that the other driver had died. In the smoke and yelling and complete chaos of my two daughters screaming in the backseat, suffering from burns, concussions, and fear, many neighbors came to our rescue and I was sent to the main trauma unit as my pregnancy had escalated from the trauma to my body, as well as in many other injuries sustained. Blessed that day is what I tell myself. We were all, as all five of us, were alive and well, but the trauma, the constant insecurity while driving, physical pain, still sustained. Most of all, the guilt and emotional strain from killing someone in this accident is far from gone. And the ability to confidently drive on this country, this and other country roads where I live has been taken away and the sheer fear of intersection is constantly a battle." And she goes on to conclude and basically appealing to our board to, you know, consider this. And a couple of similar letters that weren't nearly as personal, but certainly I think were personal in the sense that the people that drive the roads, that know the area and see the conflicts at this particular location. So I don't think I need to, to, to go and read the other two letters. You have them for the record. And I, for one, am very supportive of, of installing the stop sign. I think it's warranted. In fact, we probably will see a couple of other requests, at least one other location I'm aware of, in the same general vicinity where, again, behaviors, folks are running stop signs. And again, it doesn't guarantee, but if you stop all the, all the traffic, at least all the drivers are alerted and they have to come to a stop and hopefully at least one of the motorists obeys the, the stop requirements. So with that, I don't know if we have anybody signed up, Mr. Chair, to, to, to address. I know that because a couple of residents were going to try to make it. So if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to address this, I would say come forward. Otherwise, I'm prepared to, to move to approve the four-way stop installation.
Sir. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Thanks Lou. Thanks Reza Lubey.
Thank you, Mr. Natale. Next item.
Item 51, authorization to participate in the No Place Like Home program for the Sunrise Point and Capital Park Hotel projects.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. Cindy Kavanaugh, Director of Homeless Initiatives. I'm pleased to present this morning our recommendation for your approval to submit funding applications for two developments to the state No Place Like Home program. Together, these two applications will request 12.7 million in funding and will result, if approved, in 180 units of permanent supportive housing for persons experiencing homelessness, of which 87 in total will permanently house individuals and family households experiencing homelessness, including chronic homelessness, and are, and who are living with a serious mental illness. As you know, over the past two years, while the state sought voter approval, the county has been working with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, the cities in the county, developers, homeless, and mental health services programs, consumers, and family members to ready ourselves for this funding opportunity. We worked collaboratively on a process to align funding and identify developments that will compete at the state level and will coapply with the county as development sponsors. With many people to thank, I want to acknowledge and show my appreciation for Jane Ann Zachary from Behavioral Health Services with the county and LaShel Dozier, Christine Weichert, and their team from Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. You will recall that No Place Like Home is a state program approved by the legislature in 2016 and the voters last November. It allocates $2 billion statewide for counties to develop permanent supportive housing with the bond financing repaid from the diversion of County Mental Health Services Act funding. It's important to note that the counties are required to commit as part of these applications to services for the No Place Like Home tenants for 20 years. This is very similar to the commitments the county has made in other MHSA developments. And with the addition of Courtyard Inn recently, County Behavioral Health has partnered in nine developments, so this will make 11 permanent supportive housing developments. With more detail in this report, county services will be managed, the financing of that will be managed largely through attrition and implementation of approved new and expanded MHSA programming. There are two funding pools in No Place Like Home, and in both allocations, the county will be the coapplicant on individual projects. The action today approves those development applications with funding recommended from each of these allocations. In the non-competitive side, the county is eligible to receive and has applied for its allocation of over $5 million in non-competitive funding. That was approved in December by this board, when you also adopted the county homeless plan, which was a prerequisite for project applications. Both of these applications will also apply on the competitive funding side where we will compete as a large county in this first NOFA, which was Notice of Funding Availability, which was issued by the state in October with applications due tomorrow. I've shared this with you in the past, so I'll be brief, but in anticipation of the NOFA, we, the county and SHRA have been working on a local selection process to not only identify competitive developments for co-application, but to align the necessary local capital and operating subsidy that are needed to make these projects feasible. And while held outside of the No Place Like Home process, both projects have received commitments for project-based vouchers, which are essential for project feasibility. We issued a request to partner in our local selection criteria largely mirrors the state criteria on how they will select developments. So it's, it's fairly straightforward. On the threshold side, you meet eligibility, your project is financially feasible, you have site control. Important to note that there's no more than 49% of the development for No Place Like Home. There is a county identified lead service provider for those No Place Like Home units. There's onsite space for mental health services. And in compliance with the state requirements, it will have low-barrier entry using Housing First and Coordinated Entry for placement of tenants. We then looked on the competitive side at the funding that was being leveraged, both at the capital side, on the operating side, the readiness of the development to proceed, and the extent of services. These are all factors within the state competition. So I will present a very general overview of the developments. There's more information in the, in your report. And the development sponsors are here today to answer questions or provide additional information if you so wish. Sunrise Point is located in the city of Citrus Heights and will serve 45 individual and family households in experiencing homelessness broadly, with 22 with the No Place Like Home criteria. I should mention that it is dependent on 9% tax credits. It is seeking county consortium home approval, excuse me, home financing that will be presented to you after this presentation, has some conventional financing and a deferred developer fee. It will, I think of particular interest is that this project will serve a fairly large number of families. If I could, I wanted to show the picture that is in your packet. Let's see if I have it the right side. Probably, there we go. So this is a depiction of the Sunrise Point project serving 45 individual, individual and family households.
And it's new construction?
Yes, it is new construction. The second project, let's go back to the PowerPoint, excuse me, and I will forward it, is, excuse me, I should mention, very important, I'm sorry, I missed this, the development sponsors. There's two sponsors on this, Jamboree Housing Corporation and TLCS Incorporated. The second project is the Capital Park Hotel, which is a rehabilitation of an historic building in the city of Sacramento located downtown. It will have a total of 134 units serving persons who have experienced homelessness with 65 No Place Like Home units. I did not go over, but there are fairly robust, very robust services for the No Place Like Home tenants and other required services for all of the tenants in the development. This project is sponsored by Mercy Housing California that had, we have worked with, in other developments serving this population. It will rely on a 9% tax credit application, general partnership equity, affordable housing program funding, and a fairly large gap source that is yet to be identified. This project will likely not compete as well as the prior project because there is a $9 million financing gap. It is still eligible to compete, however, and, and we've, we found that this project met a lot of the necessary criteria. I should mention, you can see the breakdown here of 6.8 million in competitive funding, 2.8 in non-competitive. The prior project was just over $3 million in competitive No Place Like Home funding. And I will show a quick picture of the existing project. And also a very-
Cindy, could you hold for just a second?
Yes.
Supervisor Serna.
So I had a, I had a question, Cindy, if you can go back to the previous slide. So I had my briefing on this yesterday with SHRA staff. My understanding is that there's seismic work that has to take place to make the building safe. But does the pro forma for this project take all of that additional cost into account at this point?
Yes. My understanding, and I will ask Christine to come up if there is detail I'm not representing correctly, is that, that while the project may still evolve in cost, it does take into account the seismic costs as well as the relocation costs, which are, you know, fairly unique to this project.
And then if Christine's coming up, perhaps she can also answer, and I'm sorry, I didn't ask it yesterday, but, but obviously this is a multi-story building. Is there, are there any ADA compliance issues that need to be rectified?
The ADA issues will be addressed in the rehabilitation.
All right. Thank you.
Supervisor Natale, you want to go now or wait?
Yeah, I'll wait.
Okay.
So I am at the last slide. So we will, we are working hard on the applications pending your approval, which will be submitted to the state tomorrow. We expect funding announcements in May. We do intend to keep with these projects as our funding pipeline through a second round of No Place Like Home if they are not successful in the first round. That second round is anticipated in the fall and we will begin work nearly immediately on the next local funding round. In closing, with the point in time of homeless persons count occurring this week, I want to just recognize that this action is, is one of many that this board has taken, but represents an important contribution to this region's overall commitment to combating homelessness. With that, I or someone else from, from the background here, one of the other agencies or the development sponsors can answer questions.
Supervisor Natale.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Cindy. And certainly I would just say to the rapport here today that it's encouraging and I think obviously the opportunity to help folks who certainly are in need, but will need services for, you know, obviously prescribed here 20 years, but these are permanent supportive housing units. And so whether it's the, the residents who occupy for the first round or from there on out, obviously we'll have that umbrella of, of services and that net there to, to assist them and hopefully allow them to have a good quality of life. What I wanted to ask about though, because in both these projects, again, certainly within the county, one in downtown and one in Citrus Heights, but I know that in previous discussions, at least a couple of properties, I don't know what their availability is in the unincorporated area in the district I represent that were former, or still hotels, I guess, or motels. And as we look at next funding cycle, I would like to have a serious look at that. One has major code issues. It's, but it's, this approach, I think, would be far better than some of the neighborhood issues that we've endured out there and that where you have services onsite. They're not nearly the number of units that we, we see here. But again, two older motels, and again, we've had, obviously, you know, a real important advance in the, what happened quarter with Supervisor Peters and her leadership on, on that particular property out there. But I would like us to take a look at that. Again, if, you know, if we're looking, you know, to provide those services throughout our community. And again, there's a lot of pieces and I know there's a lot of different funding components and you got to have a willing, you know, a property owner. But I would like us to take a look at those again. It goes back to this whole thing about converting older motels in some of these older corridors and in a way that certainly may enhance our ability to do services such as this for folks that were formerly homeless, but also just, you know, some of the challenges come with those properties. And so as you're going to start immediately for the September round, I got that. We hope we get these, mostly these funded. But I would like us to take a serious look. And there are other motels and hotels throughout the county, not just in District 5. But I think, you know, again, this might be a very welcome improvement and it allows us to continue to advance in our, in our homeless services component of what we're trying to do here in this community. So, and I don't know if you have a candidate list. You know, we've had this conversation. I mentioned these properties in the past and there are others that have been mentioned. So I don't know where we are. And, you know, I've talked to certainly LaShel and her staff about this. And I know that you can only juggle so many, you know, balls at one time in the air, but I would like us to take a serious look. It's, you know, and I guess the other question, maybe I, question here is to know without, you know, getting anything as proprietary, but some of the candidate properties that we're looking at, or candidate locations maybe, you know, so that we have an idea, you know, where we're going with all this. And, you know, this is rolling out over a course of several years, but as we look to get community and, you know, support and endorsement, begin to show, you know, the, the ability for us to deliver these services. And obviously, the county's going to be, you know, the one that stands behind that. I would like to know where we're looking at other locations. And I think the next report back ought to include that as we look at the candidate list for the September NOFA.
So just one thing in response. I appreciate your comments or your, your points. We did note two additional applications that were received in this first funding round. It is true that we are dependent on the development community, that we are partnering with, working with, encouraging to identify properties and put together financing. It is, it is not an easy task on their end and it is a fairly small pool of development sponsors. But on page four, you'll see that we are going to continue to work with the two applications that came in as part of this funding round, but then withdrew. One was within the unincorporated c- But on page four, you'll see that we are going to continue to work with the two applications that came in as part of this funding round but then withdrew. One was within the unincorporated county area from mutual housing and another was in the rail yards area. So we certainly can put on our thinking caps on how we can be proactive to encourage and look at those opportunities within this, within this funding opportunity.
Well, let me ask about that though, because if we're dependent upon the development community, obviously we need partners, and you have, you know, just in the shortlist here, you have USA Properties and obviously Mercy and Mutual Housing and Jamboree, which and TLCS, you know, most of those names are known to us and are strong organizations. But why are we dependent upon such a large degree just the development community? Again, recognize there has to be tax credit applications and all the various financing programs. So why is the county or our housing agency and/or whoever, but certainly this, the county, able to not just promote this and to, you know, welcome applications, but why wouldn't we go out there and try to put these, you know, help put these deals together? And actually be the catalyst? I don't want to sit around and wait for people to submit an application to me.
Yeah, I think SHRA is doing some of that.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's what I wanted to hear, yeah.
And here's LaShelle.
Yeah, there's LaShelle.
Hi Supervisor Nattoli, LaShelle Dozier with SHRA. And in fact, we are doing exactly that. We have planned for a kind of workshop charrette that is going to be occurring in March.
Okay.
I think we're trying to nail that date down, March 20, March 22nd, but we'll get out information. But we're doing exactly that. We want to not only bring together just the developers who have been doing this type of work, but also really reach out to developers who may not have been doing work in Sacramento, who have the experience to do this type of work, and to bring them together even with the motel owners, as well as the planning department will be there. So this is a whole charrette to really walk them through what the process is, what our experience has been, to really encourage them to be looking at opportunities and pairing all of the right partners together, the social service providers, all of them at this particular workshop, in anticipation of the funding that is going to be coming online with No Place Like Home, as well as our funding cycles at SHRA.
Could I ask you on that? And that's encouraged you to know, maybe you told me that in the briefing, I don't know, I didn't recall it, we were having this charrette or workshop, but I, with the bond monies that will be available through Prop 3 and Prop 2, I guess, some of that was redirected, but for affordable housing for, and there's a veterans component there. So how is it that we're going to kind of wrap that in? That money's not available yet, obviously, that's just, you know, recently approved, but...
Yes. And if you recall, that was one of the report backs that Supervisor Serna asks for the agency to come back and report out on all of the different funding sources for housing that's coming down from the state. So we are actually getting on the schedule to come back in the first quarter, so shortly, I think we're trying to get in for April, for your April meeting, and be here before the board, and then walk you through all of those different funding sources and what we anticipate the requirements are and how much the county would receive. So then that will up the amount of funds that we have available to do these types of projects. But I think the, well, I know the advantage that the county has is that the pipeline and the number of projects that are ready to go and can go is really waiting for the funding. So that's kind of the secret sauce that makes it all work.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Frost.
My first question, first I wanted to say, I know we were talking a lot about this over the last couple of years, partnering with the city of Sacramento and other jurisdictions. And so I wanted to say, wow, you really put, you all, SHRA and Cindy, all of you, put all this together so fast. I'm so surprised that you came forward so quickly with something ready to go. And I'm not real surprised because, around Citrus Heights, because they're pretty sharp and all over it. But I wanted to ask you, in your report, it was talking about the approximate cost per client being around 10,000 to 23,000. And, you know, this anticipating that with the mental health and other services, the estimated cost for this complex in Citrus Heights around 1.7 million in services. And I, and I was, and I know the services is not just the onsite services, it's all kinds of services that the county is going to be obligated to over a 20-year period, correct?
Correct.
And, and so my question is, I know that was one of the things in your presentation when you first brought this to us, that we need to be careful and make sure that we can afford this over time. So if we're making, do we have an idea of how many of these, or how many clients we can accommodate over time under this, under this type of scenario where, you know, because in 20 years, we're making a commitment for 20 years, what happens after the 20 years? And do you, how will you know when we have overcommitted and we can't, how many of these do you anticipate that we can move forward with in order to make sure we're not getting ourselves into a position where we come up 20, 15 years from now with an unbearable expense that's hard for us to, and that we can't walk away from?
Again, answer a couple of parts of that and invite behavioral health if they want to add to it. The 1.7 million a year is for both developments, I did want to say that for No Place Like Home. And tenants will come in and out and those services will continue with the units. So as tenants, you know, move or turn over, the commitment to the units continues. We have this experience, that is county behavioral health has this experience in those developments. These are services that would be provided, if you will, to these people who qualify. They are now housed as they receive these services. So it, and you recall that the county behavioral health expanded services, also expanded rehousing, but finding places is still a challenge, so this provides the housing portion really at no cost to the behavioral health, to the county behavioral health, although the commitment for services is there. I want, if that, if you would like, I can invite Dr. Bealenson down for additional detail on the financing of the services.
So I think the question is, because you're, we're talking about how many more, how many more can we do? Do we have an idea of how many of these we're planning on doing? I know we need way more, so I'm just curious as to if you anticipate that we will at some point get to a place where we need to slow this down and think about it?
We have talked about assessing this on a regular basis. When we were working on this initially, we said we can, let's start at 100 and then reassess. We're not quite at 100, but certainly it is a question we're assessing constantly.
Supervisor, a quick couple of points. First of all, this comes off of MHSA money that's already been, that's been allotted. We get to put in perspective this 1.7 million dollars per year to cover these two sites, the Capital Hotel and Sun Point are at a 59.7 million in our amount that we're getting this year, so it's a relatively modest amount. The $4 million that is going to pay the bond that will go for, that's pulled off the top of MHSA is already accounted for in our plan, so we, we're not going to be spending that money anyway. So in answer to your question, I think we'd have to look at continued MHSA allocations and kind of titrate that to how we do, how many more we build. But right now, that's, it's built into our proposal for this next couple of years.
But I'm referring to the social services that, that are accompanying it. I guess that just continues to flow from the Fed and state.
The behavioral health services flow via MHSA money, so we'd want to titrate that and not have to be on the hook for too much, so we would not be able to provide services for others, but the social services are different.
Supervisor Frost, I think the essence is that as Dr. Bealenson's saying, we have MHSA money that backs this. I think the question you're asking is on the non-mental health services, the county is on the hook for 20 years to provide those services. And if a time comes that that money's not coming into the county, that'll be a discussion we'll have with all department heads about what needs to be done and a recommendation back to the board.
And are we, is, as part of this affordable project, housing project, is there ongoing, like, are we working with people to transition them through, are there statistics as to, or do most people just move in and that's where they stay for the rest of their life? Or do a lot of these folks come in and we find a way to work with them and do some, get them connected with a job and they somehow end up moving out? How do you, how does it work in the past?
There's a combination. We are going to target these deeply, so that means it is, it may be that people will require to receive these ongoing supportive services and affordable housing to maintain their housing. But at the same time, services are offered to connect people to a wide variety of services. I want to mention that all of the projects have for all of the tenants resident-based services that are part of the development and are financed as part of the development. So those are resident services, you might call them supportive services light, they do connectivity to education, to employment, to just meaningful life activities as part of living in this development. Then the behavioral health services are deeper, but as we know, people do recover from mental health and they may move on from there as they do from alcohol and drug dependency or just look different after they are in permanent housing, after being homeless.
And then the other thing, the very last question I wanted to ask was relating to the Capital Park Hotel is, I know we're working really well with the city of Sacramento, are they, are they seeking, do you anticipate they're going to be able to come up with the 7.9 million and this is going to become a reality fairly quickly, or what is...
The development, the developer, Mercy Housing, is working very hard to identify that and we are supporting them as we can. It may be through the city of Sacramento, it may be through state MHP funding, which is more complicated, they are looking at other sources as well. One of the changes we may look to in the future is actually having that local commitment as part of this process, because it was something we anticipated, we rewarded in the criteria, but, but we didn't actually achieve in this project.
I'm excited and I'm going to support it, and I want to thank you for answering my questions.
You bet.
Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I wanted to ask a couple of questions about financing. Shall I just wait till the next item and...
Is it the home financing or financing in general? You can, you can ask them now, if you want.
Okay, I just don't want to repeat. Okay.
Christine? The next item is only for the one development, Sunrise Point, yeah.
Okay, okay, well then, maybe LaShelle or Christine could come forward. Morning. Morning. As we well know, it takes a long time to get all the pieces in place for the financing and it's not assured, requires multiple applications over several years. And, and I was wondering about the equity commitment on Capital Park, which is 7.9 million, I think the GFC report said eight. So I assume that is expected to be made up by either the city of Sacramento or additional grants that you, that you and the developer would apply for?
Correct. The 7.9 million dollars is the existing debt and we will have to apply for other sources.
Okay. And then I was just, I was looking at the permanent sources of funding and comparing the two. You know, they're not the same. And I just wanted to ask how that comes about. I mean, I guess I would expect to be seeing more similarities in the sources of the permanent funding. I'm just curious as to how that comes together, is it who you, different, why would it be different?
Right. Well, some of it has to do with the actual project size. The Capital Park project, of course, is much larger than the Sunrise Point project. They're both applying for as much tax credits as they can, and that's, that's the bulk of the money here. I mean, of course, No Place Like Home is second, but of course, the larger your project costs are, the more tax credits you can apply for from the state and receive. So that's the primary source. And SHRA is, in our next item, going to ask the board for approval of a home commitment for the Sunrise project. The, the only other big difference, I guess, is, you know, you look at how much funds or how much rent can the project can receive and what the operating costs are. Sunrise Point is able to, to apply for and receive a small, it's 2.5, I guess it's 2.7 million dollar bank loan and support that debt and service that debt, whereas Capital Park cannot. Primarily, it's just due to the AMI, sorry, the area income sort of the level of people we're reaching. But those are the primary differences between the two. I think the Capital Park is just a much more expensive project.
Well, yeah. Sunrise is $396 a square foot and Capital Park is 847.
Right. I think the acquisition prices, you look at the acquisition cost for Capital Park is $10 million just alone to acquire that building. I think it's the location and other, it's the improvements on the site, whereas, you know, Sunrise Point is just a vacant piece of land right now.
Yeah. Okay. At some point in time, I would like to see a list of all the possible sources of permanent funding. It's just, everyone is different. And just so, when we discuss this with you, either in public or in briefings, we, you know, can go down the list and say, well, what about this one, what about this one? And you can say, maybe a brief explanation behind each one about what is available, because that's where, that and the 9% tax credits and is, when No Place Like Home came about, did the state increase the amount of, I guess, 9% tax credits are federal? Is there any possibility of getting, having that pot made larger? I mean, it's just tax credits.
It is tax credits and they have a formula that they set about how...
And that's how it is.
Yeah, it's federal tax credits, but administered by the state, but that's a formula, so it's capped to how much each project can receive. So I don't think that's been adjusted.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Don't go away Christine. Okay, so I have a couple of questions. First of all, Supervisor Nattoli said there's so many opportunities and others out there, so I'm going to put in a plug for the mutual housing project on Stockton Boulevard.
We are meeting on it this afternoon, Cindy, Janeanne and I will be meeting, because we would like to see that in the next second round.
Yeah, I mean, talk about a proven track record and, and the location is badly needed, so thank you for that.
Yes.
The one question I do have though, on the breakdown of costs, is the permits. You have on the one, it's $950,000, on the other, it's almost a half a million dollars in permitting. I take it that's the city of Sacramento, city of Citrus Heights permitting?
Correct.
So why don't we have a discussion with all of the jurisdictions that we need to waive these, when we're doing these projects? We're going to turn around and spend that money on this client anyway. Why are we charging permits for housing of this kind? I think that that should be waived. So I'd like to have a discussion with all of the jurisdictions, including the county, about that.
We can certainly do that.
Thank you. All right, that's all I have. I do have one member of the audience, Dan Chamberlain.
Morning. Dan Chamberlain, I'm with Newmark Commercial Real Estate. I saw that this item was going to be heard this morning and was compelled to come over. And I have torn emotions because I'm an office property specialist, I've worked in Sacramento downtown for over 35 years, and I've had the opportunity to work with many, many organizations, including Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency, which does a lot of fantastic work. At the same time, I work with a lot of the private sector tenants downtown and get a sense of what they want and don't want in an office location. We're fortunate as a city to have a lot of fantastic development that's going on downtown right now. Most of that is due to the maturation of Sacramento to where we finally got to the point where building residential development downtown makes economic sense without subsidy. That's the main driver of what's going on in Sacramento right now. The arena is also frosting on the cake, which has helped turn things around and helped beautify downtown Sacramento. At the same time, we still are fledgling downtown to get retail users. Just across the street on J Street from the arena, there's vacant space, a couple of restaurants have gone out of business, there's other vacancy... There's other vacancy on K Street. For office users, the largest private sector tenant we had down here, State Street, 110,000 square feet, moved out to South Natomas just a short time ago. In addition to that, we've had Palmer Kazazian, Runyon Salzman, Knox Lemon, Drexel University closed entirely, Shaw Valenza, Comstock's Magazine, Freeman and Guzman, Flanagan Law Firm, District Attorney Association, and more leaving downtown Sacramento. There's a lot of wonderful things going on. We haven't seen much in the way of new users downtown. People are downtown, they have to pay a premium for the rent as well as for the cost of parking and that's going up. And that is also a part of why people are leaving. But another reason that's been cited is the lack of security or the concern for security downtown and the cleanliness. We had a developer come to Sacramento to consider investing at 11th and J on that site. When they came to town and saw what was on the streets, they announced that they're not coming to Sacramento. We need to take care of the homeless situation, there's no question. SHRA does a lot of fantastic work and we need to continue that. What I'd like to ask is that you maybe consider other options for the hotel located so close to the primary driver of downtown Sacramento, and that's the state Capitol. If we put a facility so close to the Capitol, it's not going to help the momentum that we have now for bringing office users and developers and owners to Sacramento, but it'll help to slow that down as it has in the past and continues to. I office downtown and I took my own little survey over the last few months of some of the homeless. I asked some of my brothers.
Please wrap up.
I asked where they're from. North Dakota, three from Oregon, one from Bakersfield, one from Modesto, and one from Sacramento.
Your time is up, sir. Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Before you leave, Mr. Serna has a comment and I just want to say that I thank you for coming and I couldn't disagree with you more. Mr. Serna.
Thank you. So Dan, I appreciate you being here and expressing your opinion, but I guess I would have been more inclined to be sympathetic to your disposition perhaps 10 or 15 years ago. But I think we can all agree that the challenge of homelessness, those that are shelter challenged, has become pretty ubiquitous. I mean, it's not just a downtown Sacramento phenomenon, it's not just an urban or a city phenomenon anymore.
I agree.
It's everywhere, right? I mean, we have people suffering everywhere.
Right.
Rural conditions, far-flung corners of this county. It's affecting every community that we represent.
I agree.
And therefore, I feel strongly that every community has inherent responsibility to understand that there's going to be, at least as far as I'm concerned, there's going to be some aspect of participation to address shelter challenges. I guess the question I'd have for you is, understanding the various sensitivities to the office market and the clients you represent, do you think they'd be a little bit more sensitive to folks that are feeling that their only opportunity is to camp on the corner, camp in the streets, camp in the parkway, camp in the park down the street from their, their offices versus actually being sheltered? Because it seems to me this would be a great opportunity for you to actually advocate for what we're doing today. So while, yeah, it's close to the Capitol and yes, we've had a history of challenges with SROs in downtown Sacramento, I would posit that to have the ability to expand our sheltering opportunities where some would argue it's most needed is actually going to enhance the environment for everyone, including office tenants. So I think that's why you're hearing from the chair, his remarks, and you're hearing from me, mine, that, you know, I think we respectfully disagree that we need to look in other places besides downtown Sacramento these days because of some presumed sensitivities by the office market. We're all trying to work together, the city's scrambling to find their sites. We've got now a fortified, comprehensive approach. It's not perfect. There's no, there's no plan or set of programs that are perfect out there, but I think this board to a person is very proud of what we've been able to achieve over the last two years to be in a better place today than we were two years ago with a lot of forethought, a lot of concern for all the needs of this county and our respective duties to balance those needs. But I think if every, if every person, every broker came to us and said, you know, not here, where would, where would, where would the shelter occur? Right?
I'm saying this, you couldn't get more central.
Yeah.
This is the heart of the business environment in Sacramento. Just, I say downtown, but on, more on the periphery. That is dead, dead center.
Right. I've also seen dead center, immense amount of people suffering too. So to me, you know, we have a responsibility to be sensitized to where the need is and where we offer the opportunity. And then that, again, that's now ubiquitous. It's everywhere. So just wanted to offer those comments.
Thank you, Mr. Serna. So yeah, I had the privilege of representing large counties by gubernatorial appointment to the steering committee for No Place Like Home and I thought it would never come. So this is awesome. And so with that, I will make the motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 52 is the approval of 1.3 million loan commitment for Sunrise Point.
Good morning. Christine Wecker with Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. The item before you is approval of a $1.3 million home loan for Sunrise Point. As discussed in the previous presentation, the project will also be partnering with the county to apply for No Place Like Home and seeking tax credits. As a reminder, Sunrise Point is being developed by Jamboree Housing and TLCS and consists of 47 units. All units will be awarded project-based vouchers and serve homeless households, 22 of which will be for No Place Like Home residents. The project includes multipurpose rooms, individual meeting spaces, a playground, and a basketball court. John Stewart Company will service the property manager and resident services will be provided by TLCS. The $1.3 million home loan represents the city of Citrus Heights' share of county home consortium funds through 2019. In closing, STACK recommends approval of the home loan and representatives of the development team are here and we're available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board? I do have one card, Erin Johansson.
Good morning supervisors and thank you for taking your time today to consider these projects. I wanted to just sort of recap our experience with this project because I think it's been really illustrative of how things can work when they work well. Sunrise Point is the very definition of collaborative, affordable housing development targeting homeless individuals and families who are most in need. Our development team, Jamboree Housing and TLCS, approached the city of Citrus Heights, both electeds and staff, almost two years ago. But we didn't really get into the cycle of funding until just about a year ago. So we're pretty fast to be where we are today with this project. And it's because the commitment of the city to supporting affordable housing in their city and the great collaboration we've experienced working with SHRA, DBHS, DHA staff that we are here today. This project, if you support our request, will leverage Citrus Heights home funds, HUD project-based vouchers, No Place Like Home state funds, tax credits, and county mental health supportive services. So it's a really collaborative effort. We'll be working together with a coordinated entry system managed by the continuum of care as well as DBHS and even the homeless liaison working with homeless families in the San Juan School District. SHRA staff assisted our team at every step of the way to ensure that we were putting a great application together to be as competitive as possible. Without every member of the team, this project would not be here today. It's truly a community effort and a model for how we will address homelessness in our region in a permanent way. We thank, we thank you for your consideration and especially want to thank Stephanie, Colleen, and Allison from the city of Citrus Heights for their fabulous presentations and work that they did out there. The fee comment though is a very good one, so thank you for raising that. Christine, Victoria, and Louise from SHRA, Cindy and Jane Ann, and of course, our partners at Jamboree. It took all of us to get it here, but it was pretty fast and we anticipate if we are successful at right here, right now, and then into the next couple of rounds, that we could have people really living in this property in 2020. We have support of the neighborhoods and, which wasn't super easy, you know, even based on the comments that we just heard. And I think that, I want to comment that supervisors, you really get it. Not everybody gets it. We spend a lot of time educating folks that housed people don't create as many problems as unhoused people and for the community at large. And so by providing housing, we're actually eliminating a lot of the problems that some people fear. And there is a lot of fear. So we've had a lot of good response to that. So thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. We do have some off-agenda speaker requests. Kim Church.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I arrived at 9:50 and this board was already four minutes into your recess. And doing a quick read of the agenda items, 1 through 46, this municipality approved $21 million of taxpayer money in 16 minutes with zero discussion, so noted. I came here actually to applaud Sue Frost for her willingness to try to understand the systemic complexities of homelessness. In a county that has spent a quarter of a billion dollar, quarter of a billion, with a B, dollars, through Sacramento Steps Forward to end homelessness. That has clearly failed and it was an expensive lesson that I seem to see most electeds are still unwilling to admit and learn from. Bonkers, but you're learning and I appreciate that. And we, as advocates, are going to reach out to you soon to help you in your district. Citrus Heights Heart has been fantastic and in fact, they've been better than Sacramento Steps Forward at helping me navigate youth in this town. So applause to that. I serve our unsheltered neighbors every Tuesday morning at St. Paul's Downtown. Please know that it was them who asked me to not serve them today and to forego breakfast, hygiene, and survival gear distribution so that I may speak to you before, before you today. That's why I was 20 minutes late. County residents in Patrick Kennedy's district have been attempting to get answers about the SHRA's vacant public parcel at 5700 Stockton Boulevard. People who have self-determined an emergency shelter encampment on that property have been offered no real shelter. City police department and sheriffs have been law enforcement team there for months. Every few days, they have them move from one side of the property to the other. That is cruel and unusual punishment. Let's see, you've known, if the cops are there, then you've known for months that this needed emergency sewage and emergency sanitation and yet the dumpster only arrived on Saturday and there is still yet to be toilets there. No portable toilets and no dumpsters for 50 people for months on end is chaos and you need to stop blaming the unhoused people for the circumstances that they're finding themselves in your district. Grassroots street teams, don't confuse that with the downtown streets team, they are poverty pimps, but the real, the real grassroots street teams have been providing services as best we can there for months with volunteers and no budget. Always enough for policing, man. Never enough for immediate emergency shelter. Never, never. By the way, items 47 through 52 total 102 million dollars.
Can you wrap up?
I will, I have four sentences.
Thank you.
But never enough for emergency humanitarian relief. This must change today. Unhomed residents, shelter advocates, other neighbors, and allies all asked me to come here to speak on their behalf. Each supervisor must immediately release parcel lists by district where you are during, where you are during this shelter crisis you declared welcoming shelter opportunities for your constituents tonight. Media will be asking for these lists as well. Aforementioned residents are reaching out to state and federal representatives about this and Kevin McCarty and Doris Matsui have been contacted and we have appointments with both of them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ken. I'm not going to butcher the last name, I can't read it, I'm sorry, but Dan would, yeah. Thank you.
How you doing, you guys? I'm here to talk to you guys about 5700. My name is Dan Adderall, I'm leader of American River Homeless Crew. I'm here to talk to you about 5700 blocks, San Juan Motel as well. I had the privilege of talking to SHRA and everybody outside, HHSS, thank you. And you guys, please share some, let them know they're coming tomorrow and they're going to vacate the homeless off the premises tomorrow. I'm here because I'm wanting to get that stopped, have it delayed till we go to city council and talk to the city council and the mayor about their city ordinance that are in direct violation of the Supreme Court ruling, Circuit Judge ruling in the Martin versus Boise case and to get these ordinances stopped contemporarily to have adequate shelter for the homeless. And I talked to SHRA and everybody and they're willing to let, extend it for a week if you guys let the cops not chase off the homeless there at San Juan Motel so they could get SSH help and also they gave us a chance to talk to the mayor at our next Tuesday's board meeting, I mean, city council meeting. So I was asking you guys to please, you guys willing to pass a, the police cannot go around harassing homeless till then, please? That's what I'm here to ask. And I got the backing of SHRA as well for that, they're in support of it.
Thank you, Dan. As you know, it's an item not on the agenda, so we can't get into a discussion, but please know that these discussions are going on.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Points?
That would be item 56. You are continuing to March 12, the Local Childcare Planning and Development Council for Adult and Aging Commission. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, the chief's recommend Palvinder Dillon for nomination.
Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Ms. Peters?
Continue to February 26.
Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, Ms. Peters?
Continue to March 12.
Mr. Notoli?
Nominate Lehman Lovell.
Galt Arno Cemetery District, Mr. Notoli?
Nominate the incumbent, George Higginor.
The Paratransit Board, Mr. Kennedy?
The chief would recommend for nomination, Vindu Shakar, and continue the rest till February 26.
And then we have the Recreation and Park Commission, Supervisor Frost?
Nominate Claudia Goss, Claudia Goss, please.
Sacramento County Mental Health Board, Supervisor Peters?
Nominate Christopher Barton as the consumer representative.
Supervisor Frost?
Please continue to February 26.
And Mr. Notoli?
I don't have any applicants, continue to February 25, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I have no applicants, so continue to February 25, or 26.
Okay. That concludes your nominations.
All right, we do have one more off-agenda speaker has come in. Eva Nadal.
Good afternoon, I think it's afternoon. And I don't do this very well. I'm a former state representative for Alliance for California Community Empowerment, which is ACE. Also, I was national representative for CPD, Center for Proper Democracy. But right now, I'm just here because I don't speak well in front of you guys, but I want to say thank you first for the opportunity to speak. And I've been working, I live in the Fruit Ridge area, Fruit Ridge Manor area. I just moved off of 65th and Stockton and I was amazed a few weeks ago at seeing the homeless camp they're talking about because it started off so small. And I came from church a few weeks ago and I saw all these tents and like, wow, how they take, kind of seized the neighborhoods, my first instinct, wow, how can you just move on land and so many homeless? But every 10 years, I work for the Census Bureau, we count America, so I saw this coming ahead of time. And when AB 15061 passed in November, which was Costa Hoxton Rent Control, I see this getting worse before it gets better. So as a community leader, as a mom, a grandmother, a wife, a citizen, a member of my city, my community, I just want to do whatever I can do to help. Michelle Dozer, you know, council missionary helped this last year with the project with Curtis Park with all of our senior citizens at risk of being homeless. I know friends right now, I'll be 65 next year, and I have friends right now going to be homeless in two weeks. So my passion is to say whatever I can do as a citizen, as a community leader, I'm here to help Dan. I was out there yesterday, Fruit Ridge and Stockton, walking around with all the filth, all the dirty stuff. Yeah, we got to do something. So whatever you guys, my main fear is that I heard last Saturday, I was on the freeway, that they were going to get raided. So my husband and I backtracked just to go stand there with the green hats to make sure nobody got injured or hurt. My concern is if even if there's a raid, that no one gets hurt. You know, we want our officers and sheriff to go out there with a little dignity and just secure them. People are afraid they're going to get hurt and their things are going to be thrown away. So just a little compassion, maybe, I know you guys don't have the power to give at the time, but they're fearing that tomorrow, that they're going to get caged out and things are going to out of hand in our community. So just a reassurance that we can all just have faith that, you know, the time is going to be there for everything to come together. I was out there yesterday thinking about triage. My husband worked psych for years. So the main thing, we have people who are on drugs, that's a mental illness. We have mental illness. We have mental illness, we have senior citizens, we have people with no voucher to get even a place to live, no education, no resumes. So I'm gonna say I'm good at doing resumes, I'm gonna get people back to work, we got Sacramento work, we got a lot of resources here in Sacramento. So I think if we all just work together, get the narrative on the table, and do what we're doing right now, at least as a beginning, and I thank you. I didn't come here to speak, I just came here to kind of be here, support, but I'm here to say I'm here. Patrick Kennedy, you helped us with the walk, I was with, Patrick, you worked with us, Power End Sidewalks, thank you.
Coming in, it's coming.
Thank you, I know it is. So I just want to say, we got victory, we got a lot going on in the city, protests, you know, Schumer's gonna come back with a decision soon. I know Stevante Clark personally, I took him under my wing as a son, and talked to him once a week, and you know, things are gonna be okay. Let's just have my faith, let's keep peacing. I'm here.
Thank you, Ava.
Thank you guys so much.
Appreciate your time. Okay, with that, now we will recess to closed session. Call back to order the meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, please call the roll.
Supervisors Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you.
For your afternoon item, we are going to discuss item 4, it was held over from your consent matters, approved County of Sacramento and City of Sacramento Tax Exchange Agreement Regarding Panhandle Area Annexation in North Sacramento Replacing the Agreement from May 18, 2010.
We have a staff report, or?
Yeah.
Somebody, anybody?
Yes, I'm gonna have Jeff present it. We actually was polled because the district wanted to have this item polled to be discussed, but Jeff can give you a quick overview of what this item is.
Seeing as how we've heard this on numerous occasions, a truncated report would be appreciated.
Okay, I'll go real fast. So this is the same item, it was brought to you back in October, it's basically the tax exchange agreement for the panhandle section. It does not include the pan. It's a revise of an item that was approved by the board back in May of 2010, and this is to reduce...
Do you speak up just a little bit?
I'm sorry. This is to, this item was basically a revise of what was done back in May 2010, and it's to reduce the amount of space that's being included in the annexation, and to update the tax exchange to reflect lower space and the cost of the value, or the value of the property that's gonna be annexed, which is the handle section of it. And currently, the proposed on the table is $1,500 for five years to the Park District, and then after that, there would be no more additional funding to the Park District, and the city would annex, develop the property. And the city is here, as well as the Park District.
Great, Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, please don't leave the podium. So give us an idea of how many, what was the frequency of meetings, discussions, telephonically, in person with the district in terms of exhausting a good faith discussion effort to get at the issues of concern by the district?
Okay, we've had multiple meetings starting in September of 2017, when the city approached and said they wanted to redo the tax exchange to reflect the lower amount of space, lower amount of acreage and the new values. We used the same methodology that was done back in 2010, met with the Park District, explained it to them. We met with them multiple times, primarily with Mike Heller from the Park District. By the time we got to May of 2018, we had presented to Mike Heller and the, they were turning at the time, the proposal, they didn't have any issues with the proposal at that time.
Did not have any issues?
Correct.
Okay.
And so they had no problem with it, so the city proceeded forward, went to their council, got it approved as it was. Afterwards, it was, we were notified that Mike didn't have the authority to commit the county, or the Park District to that, and so we were asked to rework with them again, so we did. And then we came back in October to the board, and the item was still the same as it was that was done back in July. And again, we were asked to work with the district again. And now we're, basically, the district wants to maintain the ability to provide the services to the area, but it's okay with the annexation as long as it does that, they can maintain the service area, and they maintain getting their revenues for the area.
Was the county council's representative in each of those meetings, or some of those meetings?
Yes.
I believe I've been at two meetings. One probably after October and one in the summer, I think, Jeff?
Yeah.
Yes.
And Krista, you characterize those meetings from your perspective as being good faith?
Certainly, we've tried to reach agreement, the city, and the meetings that I attended, the city representative, is it not working?
I didn't hear this question.
Oh, I think the question was, were the meetings conducted in good faith? And I said, you know, I was there, Jeff was there, other folks from the county, the city, their attorney, representatives of the Park District, they weren't always the smoothest of meetings, but we did certainly have good faith discussions with them and try to work out the disagreements.
Thank you.
Supervisor Frost?
I guess that was, that goes to my question, because you mentioned that there were multiple meetings in 2017 between the county and the city, was the, and then the Park District, you met with the Park District in July of 2018, and at that point in time, they did, you say they did not have any issues?
In May of 18, May 24th, we met.
Oh, May, yeah.
We went over the tax exchange agreement, and there wasn't concerns about that at that time, the more, the bigger concern was that the city would come back and take over the pan section, which is not part of this agreement at all. If the city wants to take that on, they have to come back for another tax exchange agreement at a later date. So the district will maintain that.
So when we say there were multiple meetings, the Park District in May or June, I believe we had a meeting scheduled in June, and at the last minute, the Park District submitted a letter that stated that they were, they did not receive proper notice. The meetings that you did have were with the executive director of the Park District, who was new to the Park District at the time, I believe, and also the board indicated that at that time, and I think in some of the past meetings, that the board had not been formally notified, and that was the reason why we rescheduled our June or July meeting and moved forward with our conversations, because they had not been involved at all in any of those good faith discussions between the county and the city in the past year, 2017. That's, that was my understanding, is that correct?
We had meetings, and the administrator indicated that he was talking to the board members of the district. The Park District has also had the agenda on their item, or as an item on their agenda a few times, so prior to the May hearing.
And they did have council as well, that attended, I think, one of those early meetings.
All the meetings in 2017 and 18?
Yeah.
They had council in all those meetings?
Yes. Yeah, starting on May 18th, it was the Park District and the city and the county, that was one of the meetings. There was another one on November 7th, November of 2017. There was another one on May 24th of 18, and then, of course, it came to the board and was postponed.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions of the board? I have a number of requests to speak slips. First, Councilwoman Angelique Ashby. Welcome, Councilwoman. We normally give two minutes for speakers, but since you are an elected official and from the city of Sacramento, I'll give you one.
That's perfect, thank you. That's about right. First of all, I'm sorry I can't stay for your whole meeting, I recognize a lot of beautiful faces in the crowd saying, it sounds like you're gonna celebrate really good work of the county today on First Five, and Black Child Legacy, and a lot of hard work, so I'm sorry I won't be here to celebrate that, but congratulations to everybody, and I'm proud of the city's partnership with all of you on that and your leadership, it's fantastic. I wanted to come today because this item, I feel sometimes keeps, it feels like one step forward and 17 steps backwards. This has been in the city's general plan for over 20 years, so, I mean, I think that's even before Dawn was on the county board of supervisors, right, Dawn?
I was fairly new to the board.
It definitely predates me. I inherited this when I came on over eight years ago, as did most of you. This discussion around this plan has been vetted over more than a decade, so it's not new, even though maybe there have been recent discussions over the last couple of years, this has been going on for a very, very long time. And this process, this community engagement process, which has been thorough, has been going on for over four years. So this is really not a new discussion, it's time for it to move to LAFCO. LAFCO has been waiting for this item for well over three years, anticipating that it would come onto its docket. So I did want to take just a brief moment to tell you, I brought a number of people with me, I'm gonna have them all stand up now, so if you would all stand up. Many people from the city of Sacramento wanted to be here to answer questions for you. This group includes Teresa Henganyi, the Senior Planner for Community Development, Garrett Norman, the Associate Planner, Tom Pace, the Planning Director, Ryan DeVore, the Director of Community Development, Cheryl Hodge, which is our New Growth Manager, Lynn Lindsay, the Planning Commissioner for District 1, Ray Constantino, the Parks Development Manager, Shannon Brown, the Director of Parks, Arwin Watt, who's the Infrastructure Finance Person, and several others, you guys can sit down, thank you. If you have questions for the city of Sacramento, I brought everyone I could think of who might have those answers for you, and then, of course, myself. I would like to ask you, please, to move this item on today, it has definitely seen its day, and I am hoping that you will, I will urge an "I" vote, and hope that you guys will move it forward today and onto LAFCO so that the next set of circumstances can be addressed. And then just one last piece to bed, I know that folks talk about the pan versus the handle all the time, I am only here to talk to you about the handle. There is no discussion around the pan today, and the city would have to start all over if they wanted to talk about the pan now or in the future. There's no, I personally have no interest in doing that, and neither do the businesses in the pan want to come in, they're perfectly happy being in the county, and I am happy to leave them there. So this is only about the handle today, and I hope that we can stay focused on that topic. Thank you very much.
Great, I believe Supervisor Serna?
I just wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Ashby for walking the two blocks down our way and underscoring everything that I concur with her about in terms of this being something that's been in process for actually decades, and it really does make a lot of sense to think about the continuity of service delivery by a full-service municipality. And I think having the council member here to, again, amplify some very salient points for us to consider as it relates to this revenue sharing agreement today, and as we move into the LAFCO realm, then the discussion and healthy debate, if necessary, about the merits of making sure that we do have that consistency in the Natomas part of the city of Sacramento. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Serna.
Councilmember, I have three cards from city staff members, are those, if needed, or would you like them to speak?
I think that if you call them up there, they will each have something pretty significant, can stay under about a minute. Cheryl Hodge is probably the most important person for you to hear from today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan DeVore?
Hello, Chair Kennedy, members of the board, Ryan DeVore, Director of Community Development, just here briefly to assure you that we entered this discussion in good faith, several meetings, I believe a half a dozen, and quite a bit of correspondence back and forth between my team and their team. I want to thank the county, Jeff King and Krista, for their participation in the process, I think it was collaborative, and we are, as Councilwoman Ashby mentioned, the city has no interest at this time in the pan, which I understood was a major sticking point because of the revenue there. The, this area has been in the Natomas community plan for 30 years, so a little more than 20, so quite some time.
That would precede me then, as far as...
We finally got you, that was my intent there. Also, the land is primarily vacant with no facilities in that area right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cheryl Hodge?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Chair Kennedy and board members. My name is Cheryl Hodge, the Principal Planner, New Growth Manager for the Panhandle Annexation. The item before you this afternoon is the Tax Exchange Agreement, which I'll refer to as the TEA in my comments, just to keep it, keep the acronym short, has been the subject of numerous meetings and correspondence. There has been a considerable amount of time spent by all, the county, the city, and the Rio Linda Alberta Recreation and Park District. These efforts have been described in your staff report, and the city has acted in good faith and been fair in regards to the tax exchange agreement. Just a few points I'd like to make, for, as was mentioned, for over 30 years, this property has been part of the North Natomas community plan. The annexation area, that's the subject of this tax exchange agreement, is primarily vacant land with no existing park or recreational facilities, and as such, there is no transfer or complex transition to the city upon annexation. There are approximately 228 parks citywide, with North Natomas having over 400 acres of parkland, providing approximately 39 parks that are city-owned and controlled acres. The Park District master plan does not identify future parks or services specific to the panhandle. The city has long planned for the future development of the panhandle annexation area. The LAFCO Municipal Services Review, done in 2013 for the Park District, did not identify reliance on the panhandle as future growth and revenue for the Park District. It makes sense and is consistent with the objectives of annexation statewide, that the city have full control of public facilities within its own boundaries. As such, the city has been consistent that as a full-service city, park and rec services would be provided by the city of Sacramento upon completion of the annexation. The tax exchange agreement provides the Park District its share of revenue it currently receives for the next five years. This agreement is consistent with prior approved tax exchange agreements between the city and the county. The tax exchange, excuse me, the tax exchange agreement is only one of many steps in the annexation process. LAFCO is responsible for any decisions made for boundary changes, including detachments and service providers. Per the board's direction in October, the county, city, and Park District met to further discuss the tax exchange agreement. The outcome since that time has remained unchanged in that the Park District is opposed to the detachment and opposed to the city's position to provide services to the panhandle as we do currently citywide. Again, as previously mentioned, this aspect of the annexation is LAFCO's responsibility for deciding. In conclusion, we concur with the staff report and the county staff recommendation that you approve the tax exchange agreement, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions? Lynn Lindsay?
I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today in support of the panhandle annexation. My name is Lynn Lindsay, I'm a 17-year resident of North Natomas, president of my homeowners' association, and the current District 1 appointee to the city's Planning and Design Commission. This is not my first annexation in North Natomas, I was involved over the years during the Greenbrier Annexation, and the panhandle is just the last step in building out the North Natomas area. Over the last three years, I and many residents have been involved in numerous town halls, community meetings, homeowner and neighborhood association meetings, and this was thoroughly reviewed by the Planning and Design Commission. So it is with the utmost importance to the growth of North Natomas and the city for housing and transportation issues, and I respectfully urge your support to move the panhandle annexation to LAFCO. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Michael Seaman?
Good afternoon, I'm Michael Seaman, I'm here on behalf of California Unincorporated, which is a statewide consortium of unincorporated communities throughout California. I just pushed to start. There we go. We're here to talk about fair treatment for an unincorporated community, and Rio Linda Alberta is one of the members of our coalition. Incorporation is hard, and annexation is easy. We see that as a problem, there should be a level playing field. There are over 6 million Cali... There are over 6 million Californians who are denied, effectively denied, a level of municipal services that you might find in a city because of that situation. We believe that the alimony payment that is inherent in the Tax Exchange Agreement is tiny and brief and should be rejected. If this was an incorporation proposal, Sacramento County would be insisting on a very high and a very long alimony payment, known as revenue neutrality. Development in the Panhandle Annexation Area is fine. We don't have a problem with that. But the agreement deprives the Rio Linda Alberta Rec and Park District of significant future revenue that they need for providing even the current level of services, and the community deserves better. Also, the assumptions are based on unrealistic expectations for the Alberta-specific plan. So, bottom line, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. LAFCO's municipal service reviews have shown that there's great value in the Rec and Park District services. We all know that the city of Sacramento has a history of recreation and park problems. They try to do their best, but Rec and Park is at the wrong end of the food chain when times are tough. So detachment of Rio Linda Rec and Park District hurts the community of Rio Linda Alberta. Retaining a very small slice of property tax revenue to go to the district would ensure service delivery for the community in perpetuity. So we're here to ask that you please be fair to Rio Linda Alberta, please reject the current Tax Exchange Agreement, and instead seek an annexation agreement that retains the Rec and Park District as a service provider. Thank you.
Thank you. Bridgette Barnes.
Good afternoon, Chairman Kennedy and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Bridgette Barnes. I'm the attorney for the owners in the pan, and I'm only here to assure you that we support the annexation agreement as it is written at the present time and as long as the pan gets to stay with Sacramento County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Charlia Moore?
Good afternoon, supervisors, and thank you for allowing us to speak one more time on this issue, which is very important. My name's Charlia Moore, and I'm an elected board member of the Rio Linda Alberta Recreation and Park District. I cannot begin to express to you how distressing it is that our board has fought against this very thing for over 25 years. We have opposed it every single board. The board members currently are entirely different than the board members that started out fighting this. So it should be noted by you that we've always seen the handle and the pan as our jurisdiction. It's always been listed as our jurisdiction. We've always thought that we were going to get revenue from property development within the pan. Not that long ago, back in the early 2000s, Kathy Long, one of our previous administrators, worked with Dunmore Homes, and there was a complete plan done by our Park District for the handle. And that was not having... was never, ever... the city and the county never came forward and said, "Oh, you can't do that. It's not yours." So all I can say is that this was not where we intended to end up. We still don't intend to end up there. We do not object to the annexation. We do not object to development in any way. The simple thing and the most fair thing to do is for you to approve the annexation, but not the detachment. If we are not detached, everything is solved. That's the end of it. We're done. So that's all I'm asking for you. Go ahead and approve. Send it to LAFCO as an annexation without detachment. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all the cards that I have. Is there any comment from the board? Supervisor Natale.
Yeah, I had a question for our staff, maybe for Jeff or somebody from county council. So the... LAFCO is the one that actually approves annexations and detachments. And so, as I understood it, certainly from Councilmember Ashby's comments, but from the staff report, we have the Tax Exchange Agreement that's been negotiated, recognizing the differences here before us. Are we approving the detachment in this action as well?
No, just the Tax Exchange Agreement. It's just something that LAFCO requires to have...
Right. That's what I thought.
No, we do not...
And I don't want to oversimplify what we're doing here. On the other hand, I want to be clear about that, certainly in light of what Charlia just said a moment ago, so...
Right.
So the matter then will be decided by LAFCO. The Tax Exchange Agreement, people can argue about the merits of that, and obviously, it's certainly connected closely to the full application, but LAFCO is the one that's going to decide whether annexation would include detachment or not. But in the event that they did, then the Tax Exchange Agreement would apply. If they did not, then it would be a moot point, as Ms. Moore said a moment ago.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Supervisor Frost.
So I just want to make a couple of comments. I had the impression, and I don't know if there's someone from the board who was at the meeting with the city and the county in October, I would like to ask a couple of questions regarding that meeting from the Rio Linda Alberta Board. Can you please state your name?
Chairman Kennedy and members of the Board of Supervisors, I'm Ann Suprell. I'm the legal counsel for the Rio Linda Park and Recreation District.
Okay, Ann.
I was at that meeting, yeah.
Can you describe the meeting and the negotiations there? Was there a back and forth? Was there conversation, or how did that meeting go?
Yes, thank you for asking the question, because after that, at the October meeting, the Board of Supervisors encouraged the parties to get together and try to come to an agreement. We took that very seriously, so we immediately had a board meeting. Then we scheduled, we had the meeting, I think it was on October 29th, with the county and the city, and they had their legal counsel there. And we discussed the issues, and the district was... the district was told that the offer that it had made before was too ambiguous. That was one of the problems. And basically, that we needed, if we were going to make an offer, it had to be very definite. And so we did. We sent a letter, and you have that in your packet. I sent the letter to Jeff King and Cheryl Hodge's, making... you know, we parroted the language of that condition of the Tax Exchange Agreement so that it was crystal clear that the officials who are responsible for collecting and dispersing the property taxes would have no problem knowing exactly what it was that we were proposing. And my letter said that we were looking forward to a response because we were negotiating in good faith. That's what we were attempting to do. And as I pointed out in my letter, that was the only meeting after the Board of Supervisors' meeting, because the answer we got was, "We've reviewed your offer. We reject it. We're going to go ahead in January with this agreement as written."
So that wasn't a conversation in the meeting? It was basically, they asked what your proposal was, you told them, everyone went home, and then you got a letter later, basically?
Yeah, we said, at that meeting, we said, "We understood the concerns about the ambiguity, et cetera," and that we would prepare a proposal, which we did. We went back, prepared the letter with the proposed condition, sent it, and then the answer we got back was, "That's it."
And it's my understanding that, based on hundreds of letters from the community and from the board, that the Rio Linda Alberta Park and Rec wants to maintain the services, and if they cannot... that's what they really want, and they feel that the tax-sharing agreement is not equitable. And there was even some conversation at one point where they would be willing to provide services with some kind of an agreement, but there was never any... there was never any way to get past...
Right. The city was not interested.
There's no way. The city wants the services, and that's it, basically.
That's exactly right. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I'm... that's all I wanted to ask you, unless you have more comments that you wanted to make.
Well, other than just to reiterate that the district doesn't have any position, is not taking any position on the annexation, but we definitely do not want the territory to be detached. And also, we've looked very carefully at LAFCO's policies, and we think that the findings cannot be made for detachment, because that would result in a non-contiguous boundaries, a big island in the middle of our service territory. And LAFCO has policies that, in order to approve such a detachment, certain findings have to be made, and there are at least five of those that the facts just don't support. So our next step would be just to go to LAFCO and make those arguments.
And what year was the... was the Park District formed?
I don't know. 1994?
94. So it was formed, and basically, the next day, people started applying for a sphere of influence and marking a territory that they wanted to take away from the district, basically. Is that correct? That battle has been going on, if it's gone on for 20 years...
That's my understanding. I'll have Mr. Heller.
94, 2004. So it was about... you had a district that was formed, and four years later, they started to... there was an effort to, I guess, take away, take apart your district. I don't know how you say it.
Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Mike Heller. I'm the district administrator for the Rio Linda Alberta Recreation and Park District. Yes, we were formed in 1994, I believe, and Cheryl or a member of the city can back this up. I believe the Sphere of Influence was created in 1997, so it was within our first formative years. '97, right?
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
So I guess the point I'm trying to make, and I went about it the long way, but wanted to make it clear that it's... this isn't a new issue. This is something that has been going on for a couple of decades. The Rio Linda Alberta Recreation and Park District has been basically having to fight to protect what they feel is their territory and their future. And it, you know, I guess, I think it's unfortunate that it's had to be this way. Over time, having to go through this, we've watched a lot of other annexations where Park Districts actually cross over political lines, so it's not unusual for a Park District to be formed and to remain a single entity as lines move around. They still serve those same areas. An example of that is like Citrus Heights, San... let's see, Sunrise Rec and Park represents the unincorporated county and Citrus Heights and, you know, other areas. So it's not unusual for these districts that are formed to cross political lines. We've been debating this for years, and the primary concern that Rio Linda Alberta Rec and Park District has is that they want to maintain their district and protect their financial interest. They're very passionate about self-governance, especially in these unincorporated communities where they can't... maybe they're not a city, but their leadership in the community is the Water Board and the Park Board, and those are the leaders in the community, and that's how they build community and economic... around community and economic development. It's a sense of identity that comes with self-government. I question if it's fair to detach a territory from a district that has been highly successful in delivering services over time to everyone in their community. They've done a really good job, and there isn't one complaint that I know of that Rio Linda Rec and Park hasn't done an excellent job with delivering services. In October, I had hoped that the meetings would go in a way that everyone would go back to the table, and they would be able to work something out, and I somehow have this sense that the city of Sacramento is unbending. They're not going to want... they want the annexation, and they want the services, and they want it all. And it's kind of like... no matter what the Park District tries, how... no matter how they try to have that conversation, that conversation isn't going to happen because the city of Sacramento wants that territory. And it kind of rings of, like, you know, the big boys coming in and taking over because they can. And so I have received hundreds of letters. I've received calls, and I... my community, Rio Linda and Alberta, are very passionate about retaining the services of the Park District, and I support that. I'm not going to support the proposed tax-sharing agreement. I'm questioning whether or not their district should be separated. I don't have any problem with the annexation. I think it makes complete sense. But as it relates to the Park District, I support the district in their effort to maintain the services that they've... and the opportunity for the future for their community to serve that area. And so I'm hoping that the board will agree with me and not support the tax-sharing agreement.
Okay, we did get a late card in. Charles Gordon.
Supervisor Frost, thank you very much for your feelings on this. The Panhandle, Rio Linda Alberta Recreation and Park District, has been in charge of this now for about or over 25 years. Sacramento City is the big brother here. And what Sacramento City wants, quite often gets. But Rio Linda Alberta Recreation and Park District has been in charge of this, like I say, for over 25 years. It is now coming to where it can be developed, and Sacramento wants to give us $2,500 over a year for five years. To me, this is just a slap in the face. I have nothing more to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Natale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make a couple of comments here. One, certainly to acknowledge the correspondence that we've received, many of the letters, some of them form letters, nonetheless, correspondence from folks that reside in and were supportive of the Park District's position, as well as, obviously, correspondence from some of the representatives from the properties within the proposed area of annexation. I want to say that, as it relates to the Tax Sharing Agreement, certainly, we... that's the matter before us. I asked about that a moment ago, and I know that there's, you know, even some, as Mr. Warren said a moment ago, but some kind of latent concerns about that, about $2,500, and I understand how that calculation was made. And I know when we talked about this in October, that some of the previous iterations had had other property included, and the amount was not a large amount, but it was about more than order of magnitude of $12,000 to $15,000, if I recall correctly. But being as it may, there's a calculation that we have applied here, and that's what the staff is bringing to us. And I guess what I take away from this is that, certainly with the Sphere of Influence and the Park District boundaries, also the city's general plan, that that matter is going to be decided by LAFCO. No matter what we do here today, obviously, there needs to be a Tax Sharing Agreement as a part of that, submental to LAFCO. So I recognize that this is an insignificant action, and certainly, the desire by the Park District to be the service provider. I would just say, and not serving on the LAFCO Commission, but certainly, my familiarity with these issues, that as it relates to creating an island, this would be the only island in the county as it relates to service... island in the county as it relates to service provision, but that is going to be a matter that the Lafco Commission certainly is going to have to come to grips with in their consideration of this, particularly in light of the district's desire to not have this detached. And the city's position, obviously, is a full-service city, different from contract cities or cities that may not provide park services but do it, you know, do it through contract. So I would just say, and I appreciate certainly Supervisor Frost's comments, as well as obviously Supervisor Serna's and others who make speak here today. But in kind of, again, my assessment of this, in review of it, recognizing that, you know, the amount of money that will come to the district for that five-year period, I don't know that there couldn't have been some other term. That's pretty much a standard approach. I think that the parties are free to negotiate something differently. However, that's the term that's presented to us. Our staff is presented as being fair, albeit Rio Linda, Alberta, Park District doesn't believe to be so. But I do think the matter that's probably before us is that tax sharing agreement, that that's what we're going to be voting on. The annexation and detachment, again, not to defer, but to recognize that that's going to squarely be in the lapses of Lafco to analyze and to make some determination regarding that. So I'm prepared to support the staff recommendation here today and wanted to state that, so thanks.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So I am prepared to move staff recommendation, but I want to make some comments before we take a vote, because I too, just like the rest of this board, have been in receipt of the many emails, the form emails from the Rio Linda, Alberta community. I think some of which, perhaps most of which have been duplicates from the prior anticipation of the prior hearing. But being that as it may, I think it's important to certainly, as a representative of a very, very small portion of the Rio Linda, Alberta community, that northwest portion near McCollum Business Park, to acknowledge that. And I appreciate that. And I appreciate, as Supervisor Frost has said, the passion that the community has demonstrated in trying to convince this board on this particular facet of the lengthy annexation process to consider their position as it relates to the tax sharing agreement. Now, having said that, I think if you remember my comments earlier, when I was responding to Councilmember Ashby or following up on her comments, I have to look at this issue through multiple lenses, not the least of which is the fact that I'm looking through it as, in terms of a service delivery lens. And granted, this is not the Lafco action. This is not the action that is going to memorialize the annexation and detachment today. It's certainly a predecessor to that action by Lafco. But I think it's an important one to make sure that the process moves along as intended. As has been mentioned several times by several speakers, this has been in process for a number of years. To me, it does not make much sense to have an important service delivered, such as that associated with parks and recreation, between two different districts when you have a contiguous community of North Natomas. I represent tens of thousands of people in that community as well. And I feel an obligation to that part of my district to make sure that they have every opportunity to receive services that are commensurate with the ability to receive the best services. So that's kind of the lens I've been looking through all along. As to Supervisor Frost's earlier comment about other areas of the county where you have special districts that continue to provide these types of services, that's true. But then look at the very odd political geography we end up with. We end up with places like the Fruit Ridge Finger. And one of the principal reasons we have the Fruit Ridge Finger is because of the long history of South Gate Parks and Rec, which does a fine job. And prior to Sacramento Fire serving that area, we had Fruit Ridge Fire serving that area. But you end up with some very odd political geography that makes service delivery a little bit more challenging. So, and then lastly, I want to just again remind everyone that, as has been stated, this is not about making a decision today that is leading to the annexation detachment of the Pan portion of that portion of Natomas. My understanding is that the Park District, well, the Recreation Park District will continue to serve that area. So if you think about it, this has really been, at times, heated debate about a vacant acreage. We're not talking about the occupied acreage. We're not talking about the acreage where I would assume there's actually more revenue derived from the Pan than a vacant handle at this point. And so again, in terms of kind of the cumulative reasons why I believe this makes a lot of sense, I am very prepared to enthusiastically support staff's recommendation. I'd look for a second.
Second. We have a motion, second. Please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Frost voting against this item.
Thank you, everyone. Next item, please.
For item number 53, I do need a motion to continue this to February 5th. This is a report back regarding the enforcement of illegal fireworks in the County of Sacramento.
Chair moves.
Second.
Please vote. I'm sorry, Supervisor Natoli, was that on this item you wanted to speak?
Yeah, I do. I'm kind of continuous, but I've talked with the county executive today in that I just want to be sure that it's clear, because I'm responding to calls, maybe your offices are giving there as well, as to how the item appeared on the agenda. And certainly, I have an interest in it on behalf of folks that I represent, but others have expressed an interest. I just want to be clear about that, is that, you know, this wasn't agenda by the District Five Supervisor, that there are concerns by folks throughout this community relative to illegal fireworks and to some of the activity we saw both leading up to the Fourth of July as well as after that. And we called upon, and the county executive has agreed to, again, with working with the fire task force, talked with law enforcement and others, and somehow the word is now, at least as I'm getting back feedback to me, that this was solely an item that I requested on this agenda. I'm very interested. I want it on the agenda. I want to have the discussion with my colleagues and with the broader community. And so now, I don't know if you want to just, so over the course of next week, as that information continues to filter out there amongst nonprofits and manufacturers of fireworks that are safe and sane and legal, that, you know, the discussion didn't emanate about some major ban of fireworks totally, or, again, we want to report back on, to talk about the subject.
So we've been receiving similar phone calls. What we're making clear is that this is an item that came up during a board discussion. There's interest from board members on what can be done about illegal fireworks, not the legal ones, illegal ones. And when we reached out Sac Metro Possum Fire, they're the ones that are the chair for the committee. They engage sheriff, various city police departments, and any other fire departments in the county. So what we are letting folks know is that the conversation is more about, as we get into Fourth of July, what can be done for illegal fireworks? And our understanding is that the task force starts convening, starting in February. So this is an opportunity for everybody to come, give their opinion to the board, and but also hear from our board what kind of concerns you're seeing in your district and what can be done to mitigate some of those issues.
Okay, thanks. So I support.
I'm sure that I can speak for your four other colleagues that certainly did not come just out of District Five, that we all received those calls. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right.
Unanimous vote. Item 54 is the Sacramento County Child Death Review Team 2016 Annual Report.
Good morning, I guess good afternoon now, members of the board. I'm Sheila Boxley, the President and CEO of the Child Abuse Prevention Center. And once again, I'm before you presenting this report. And I do so humbly on behalf of the 24 agencies who participate in the process as members of the Child Death Review Team. I want to extend our appreciation to the Sacramento County Children's Coalition because for many, many years, they have provided the funding in order for us to have this team and to provide this report and information to you and to the community and others. I really do want to express appreciation to all the individuals who have been a part of this. And what I should mention is, in addition to the 24 agencies, and that includes all the hospital systems, numerous county agencies and departments and others, in addition to the work that they do on a monthly basis, another whole group of people then participate once the data is in its draft form, to talk about what the recommendations should be and really have a variety of other perspectives. And so we think that's really important. And that certainly includes other really important initiatives like Black Lives Matter. So there's been a lot of input into this, both in terms of the data and information as well as the recommendations. This is the second year that this report will be provided in two parts, where it is a team between the Child Death Review Team and the Fetal Infant Mortality Review. And so you will be hearing from several of us, actually three of us, and then as we do our parts, we will all come back up and answer any additional questions you may have. Certainly, please stop us at any point, though, if you have a question or any of the data seems unclear or the graphs or those sorts of things. You'll notice standing next to me is Deputy DA Chris Orr, and he is the Vice Chair of the Child Death Review Team and is here to present many of the findings that are in the report and data. And very shortly, our own Public Health Officer, Dr. Casiri, will be up and will be joining us to talk about the fetal infant mortality review. I should tell you that this is the 27th year of the Child Death Review Team report. And though he is not here now, I can tell you that Supervisor Natoli was not in the chair at that time. However, I was involved at that time, actually as a consultant to the Child Abuse Prevention Council to help put this together. So this report and this process and its continuity and its accuracy and its impact are very deeply important to me and to others in the community. We are happy to let you know that in addition to what we typically have as a report that is largely data and very objective data, we do have some additional objective data, but it's in the form of three thematic reviews. And so what you will see is, in addition to all the general data, there's a much deeper dive looking at African-American disproportionality, identified risk factors in child deaths, and the fetal infant mortality review. And before turning it over to Chris, I would be remiss if I did not shout out my really sincere appreciation to my staff, particularly under the leadership of Stephanie Beigler, who do this work and do it meticulously and review it and review it and review it again to make sure that you're getting the very best product. And I should probably also tell you that Stephanie is in demand for conferences all around the country as an expert in this area, so we're very blessed to have her. With that, I will turn this section over to Chris.
Good afternoon again. My name is Chris Orr. I'm the Deputy District Attorney of the Sacramento District Attorney's Office and the Vice Chair. So we're going to be going over the data portion of this. And as the chart that you'll see above, there was 137 child deaths last year in Sacramento County. 131 of those were for Sacramento County residents. Six were for out-of-county residents who died from injury-related deaths while in Sacramento County. The 2016 child death rate increased to 36.5 per 100,000 children. In 2016, in 2015, it was 34.7 per 100,000 children. Of the 131 deaths, as the chart you'll see shows, 18 percentage of those were injury-related, were in an injury-related manner, or 24 of the 131 deaths. 78 occurred in a natural manner, 102 of the 131. 4% were undetermined manner, five of the 131. And Dr. Casiri will present more in depth on the infant-related manner ones. The next chart you're going to see tries to provide some more clarity about this by taking a 10-year trend and looking at the 10-year trend and showing the three-year rolling averages. So the three-year rolling average has flattened the fluctuation of deaths over the years. And the child mortality rates have actually declined when you look at this chart over the 10-year trend. So as you can see, for all child deaths back in 2007, there's 49.3 per 100,000 children. And now it's 36 child deaths per 100,000. So there has been a decline over those intervening 10 years. For natural deaths, again, we've also seen a decline from 34.6 down to 27.2 as it relates to deaths here in Sacramento County. And for injury-related, again, a decline of 12.5 down to 7.1 for the injury-related. And further decline of the undetermined from 2.2 down to 1.8. And so obviously, as we're talking about injury-related, injury-related deaths are those deaths that involve homicide, motor vehicle collisions, suicides, drownings, burns, fires, and suffocations. Natural deaths are the rest of the overall collection involving prenatal conditions, congenital anomalies, cancers, SIDS, SUDs, infections, and other respiratory conditions. And our undetermined are the ones that the pathologists are unable to determine sufficient evidence to determine how it was the child died. Those can include some of our sleep-related deaths, where you just don't have enough evidence to determine the cause or manner of death.
Yes, Supervisor Serna.
Real quick question.
Sure.
Just want to make sure I understood what you just said. So if you go back to the previous slide.
Yes.
So death associated with perinatal conditions is considered injury-related or natural?
Perinatal conditions are going to be considered a natural condition.
Natural, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Injury-related can be the homicides, the vehicle accidents, suicides, drowning, suffocations.
All right, thank you.
Sure. So our next slide here, we're going to be discussing the 2006 child homicide deaths. So these are child abuse and neglect homicides. And as you can see, overall, there was 13 total child homicides in the County of Sacramento in 2016. Six of those cases were child abuse and neglect homicides. Three of those were for Sacramento County residents, which was the same as 2015. Those Sacramento County residents that died from child abuse and neglect homicides, one was a strangulation with blunt force trauma, one was a motor vehicle collision involving substance abuse, and one was a drowning with some elements of torture. The other three were for out-of-county residents and also involved things like motorcycle, pardon, motor vehicle collisions, child abuse involving a child that was staying in a hotel locally in Sacramento, and one was also a shaken baby that occurred in a hotel. For the actual third-party homicides, there were six Sacramento County residents that were killed here in Sacramento. That was the same number as 2015. There was one out-of-county resident who was also killed in Sacramento County. For the third-party homicides, I think it's very telling that these cases all involve 15 to 17-year-olds. And the five-year trend for third-party homicides, we've had 34 third-party homicides between 2012 and 2016. 33 of those were Sacramento County residents, and firearms were used in two-thirds of those cases. So for the 15 to 17-year-olds, tends to be similar to what's been in the past, firearms with teenagers. Nearly three-quarters, or 71% of the African-American third-party homicides involved a firearm. All right. And now looking again at trends, this next chart shows the child abuse and neglect homicide child mortality rate, again, over a 10-year period using an annual and then a three-year rolling average per 100,000 children. And you can see here that the annual rate fluctuates from 3.0 per 100,000 children in 2008 to a low of .08 in 2015 and 2016. When you look at the three-year rolling average where they try to even out these fluctuations, you can see that we had a high of 1.9 per 100,000 children in 2008 and a low of .09 in 2016. So again, the numbers are coming down. And with that, I'll turn this back over to Sheila, who's going to talk about African-American disproportionality.
Okay. Bringing all of our notebooks with us. This next slide. Whoops. Somebody's erased the little arrow. Okay. This next chart has a great deal of information in it, so bear with me, but let me give you the important piece of information first. And that is that in 2016, the death rate of African-American children is 54.9 per 100,000, down from 81.7 per 100,000 in 2015. Yes. And importantly, you'll note that I talked in terms of rates, because we know there's a fluctuation in the overall child population, so we wanted to be very careful in looking apples to apples when we talked about this. That is a very significant finding. I recognize 2016 is only one year, but is a very hopeful year. And more specifically now, if you can look at the graph, as I said, there's a lot of information there in one picture. What that is showing you is that the blue bars really come from the 20-year report, when we really, we saw that as kind of a baseline to start with. The orange bars are from 2010 to 2015, so that's a five-year number. And the gray bar is 2016. Without even going into detail, you can look at that and you can see a real change. And the change that you're seeing in this case is being demonstrated in the four areas which are, have been considered and shown to be the most disproportionate areas for child death. And so that's child abuse and neglect homicides, infant sleep-related deaths, third-party homicides, and perinatal conditions. And in each one of those, you see a significant change. However, I also want to call your attention to the black line that runs across it. That line represents the percentage of the population of children who are African-American. So this is a hopeful and very impressive finding, and it also shows us we still need to continue to do more.
Sheila?
Yes.
As the Chair. Just real quick, and hopefully I'm not going to steal your thunder here, but, so this chart really tells a story of that year, 2016, and you prefaced it, I think, really clearly. But is it fair to say that that year is special for a variety of reasons, because it's the year that we kind of had the entire effort focused on reducing the disproportionality, you know, firing on all cylinders? The Board of Supervisors, by that time, had funded millions of dollars in service delivery and programmatic effort. First five, by that time, had done the same. And so that's when, in earnest, the community was all walking lockstep for the first time to really begin to implement programming. We had certainly had Blue Ribbon Commissions, we had Steering Committee work, which had to happen before. We had budgetary discussions, and we devised implementation plans and strategic plans, but this was the first year that it was all put into motion. Fair to say?
Fair to say. It certainly is my opinion that that makes a difference. And as an illustration, for example, the initial funding for the Safe Sleep Baby Program took over a year in terms of engaging over 400 people to develop the campaign. So that, you know, there was some time for each of these areas to be put into effect, staff hired and trained, I mean, all the things that have to go into developing and implementing programming. So it is my belief and professional judgment that, yes, indeed, you are absolutely correct.
All right, thank you.
And with your permission, because there is so much, I'm going to spend a little bit more time on this slide, just to lay out some of the details. First of all, there were zero African-American children who died from child abuse and neglect homicides in 2016. You can't get better. I should have ended with that one, but nonetheless, nonetheless, there was only one African-American child who died of third-party homicides, only three African-American infants who died of sleep-related deaths. And a really important distinction about that is, all three of those children are in neighborhoods and areas in which the program has not been implemented. You did that so well. I really appreciate, we practiced a lot on that part. Okay, all right. And six African-American infants died of perinatal conditions. And while these are all unacceptable, they are nonetheless all much lower numbers than we have seen in the past. I want to point out some of the, I guess, some of the comparisons as well. In between 2010 and 2015, African-American children represented 11% of the child population in our county and 24% of the deaths. In 2016, they represented 10% of the child population and 15% of the child deaths. So we're narrowing that margin. We're not there yet, but we're narrowing that margin, and that's important. Each of these areas, as you can see, have had some kind of a change and a decrease in the same area. And in each case, when you compare the last five years or the original numbers in the 20-year report, you see in every case a significant decline, which obviously is displayed in the graph, but the numbers really do represent children. They represent children in our community, and so it's very powerful. And I will ask Chris to continue with some more information.
All right, I'm going to be talking now about the infant sleep-related deaths, and as it related to that, there were 11 total infant sleep-reported deaths from 2016. That's a decrease from 2015 and 14 and 13. There was a rate decrease from 15, rate decrease to 15 from 2015. There was 11, pardon me, there was nearly two-thirds of, or 64% in neighborhoods not currently targeted by the Sleep Safe Baby Education Program, which is an increase from 36% in 2015. There was 100% in sleeping conditions known by the American Academy of Pediatrics to be unsafe. So more than 55% were in unsafe sleeping positions. Almost half were co-sleeping, and almost half had a cluttered crib. Three-quarters, or 73%, or eight out of 11, were known to have a crib in the home. The remaining one-quarter is unknown. So nearly two-thirds of the, or 64% of the infant sleep-reported deaths occurred in families with a Sacramento County CPS history. Six, this is the sixth year finding statistical significance in correlation between having a history of a CPS referral and an infant sleep-related death with a 90, at the 99% confidence level. An infant with a history of a CPS referral is 2.6 times more likely to suffer an infant sleep-reported death than an infant who does not have a CPS referral. There's no statistical significance between CPS history and infant sleep-related death when controlling for race.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that last statistic? You went really fast.
Yes.
I want to make sure I followed you, what you just said, the last one.
So nearly two-thirds, or 64% of infant sleep-reported deaths occurred in families with a Sacramento County CPS history.
Okay.
And so an infant with a history, CPS referral history, has a 2.6 times more likely to suffer an infant sleep-reported death than an infant who does not have that referral history.
Who doesn't have a CPS referral? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks for slowing me down.
That's good. I know you have a lot to cover, you and Sheila both, I just, but I wanted to pick up what you said.
All right. So next we're going to talk about the risk factor presence in a 10-year trend. Again, this is using three-year rolling averages. So 84% of families had at least one risk factor. 71% had more than one risk factor. And the three most common risk factors are poverty. This is an increase from 2007 at 23%, and 2016 it's at 60%. Families with an alcohol and drug history, in 2007, it was 24%, and in 2016, it's 36%. And then, this next figure shows any family with any CPS history involvement, there's a 54% rolling average rate in 2016 compared to a 51% rolling average rate in 2015.
If you'd hold there for a minute, Supervisor Nottoli.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. Just on this chart, as you were going through it then, so you show this steep increase in both the impacts of poverty, at least as shown in this trend, and as you've explained it, and a pretty steep on the family CPS history. Is there, the explanation behind that, is that we're tracking that better, or that's, or you're doing a better job in some areas with families that aren't impoverished that get the information? I mean, again, going back to what Supervisor Serna asked about earlier, about some of the things were set in motion, you know, earlier in the decade, this decade. I guess I'm just curious, though, when you see that, you know, rise from, you know, basically less than a quarter percent to nearly two-thirds, as it relates to poverty as being a factor.
I think that we do track, that is part of our procedure, that we do track that. I don't know, I wasn't actually in, on the group in 2007, about how diligent we were tracking.
Because I think poverty would have been a factor in the past as well, I guess, is that, you know, again, just years on this board and hearing some of the discussion, you know, pre some of the initiatives that have been most recently referenced, but some other things we've worked on as a community, again, where poverty wasn't a factor, you know, nearly a significant factor 10 years ago, and now it's risen. Again, I guess I just find that trend, I mean, my assumption would have been, based upon discussion we have before this board, other information I've seen, that poverty has, has, and now continues to be a factor. So I guess Sheila, you've been working with this a long time, so I guess I'm curious as to, that's a pretty stark, stark revelation if it's, if it's based on something beyond just better tracking.
I don't believe it is based on better tracking, because I think the tracking has been well-done all along. And because the same agencies have been engaged in it, using the same kind of record-keeping in their reporting, you know, there's always human error, so there could be a tiny, you know, tiny difference due to that. But I think there are other factors that are being reported in the literature that start to make a difference. This is not from the team, this is what I know and some of what I've read about and am aware of. I mean, certainly one thing is, as you reduce the number of overall deaths, which you saw in the chart, you have essentially maybe, first of all, dealt with some of the easier ones to deal with, which may not have had all of those same risk factors. We also know there are some differences in some of the measurements in terms of where the thresholds have been for, say, poverty. And we know as a state that the number of children in poverty is growing and has continued to grow. So it becomes more likely that we are going to see children in poverty who represent the child death population as well as the general population. So I think there's a variety of factors at play in this. That's certainly not all of them. But I do want to ease your mind that there hasn't been some radically different way of getting the information from the departments and the agencies. That's really been quite consistent over time.
If I could just, and I appreciate that, again, you know, it sounds to me like, you know, obviously we're drilling deeper into this, and maybe as we're having success in certain areas, then I think it really peels back and shows where, you know, there continues to be a, you know, very stark contrast relative to trying to address the, you know, the death rate within certain segments of our population. But then the other one is, I found a little interesting, and so there has been not a whole lot of change as it relates to the alcohol and other drug history as being a factor. I mean, there is a, you know, there's a 50% increase, 24% over 36%, but, and I'm just, I'm curious, so only one-third of the cases you're finding that is, finding that that is a factor within the family framework, is that, did I take that correct?
Well, these are what we have reported, and there are agencies in the county and elsewhere who have the records. So the methodology is that the death certificate goes out, and each of the member agencies of the Child Death Review Team are looking at their records. So that's why there's a certain level of consistency in that. And I would also point out that by using the records of people on public assistance and so on as a measure of poverty, you have a very concrete measurement that you can use. When we talk about AOD, for example, that's only what we know about. We don't necessarily know that Family X has a family member with a substance abuse problem that's never come to the attention of any of the 24 agencies. So that, these are the known risk factors, which, that might sound comforting, but I think it's not comforting, because that means that's only what we know about, and there could be more.
And that's part of why I inquired about that, so.
Okay, thanks.
And that was part of what I also would point out, is that the alcohol and drug history is usually self-reported versus the other two are measured through agencies' direct input about whether there's a CPS history, or they're receiving Medi-Cal or food stamps or a CalFresh or something.
Could I just ask on that? So in the full report, is that noted that, as you look at these, because this comes, you know, this chart comes up, and that it's reported by agencies with respect to the first two columns there, but in the last one, it's self-reported? I trust that that's pointed out in the text? It is? Okay, thanks.
All right. And then I'll turn over the recommendations to Sheila.
Thank you. Again, just as a reminder, that these recommendations come from all 24 of the CDRT agencies, as well as others from the prevention field and elsewhere who were brought in to do a review and assist in developing the recommendations. I also want to point out that historically, the recommendations from the Child Death Review Team have been really important in moving new programs and new policies, and really taking a good, strong look at what we're doing and what we can do better. So on behalf of all of those organizations and individuals, I offer you these recommendations based on the 2016 report and all the data we have, obviously, from all the prior reports.
Supervisor Serna?
So with that said, I just want to issue my sincere thanks for all the work that you do, Sheila, and DA's office, everyone else that's part of the Child Death Review Team. You and I seem to have a continuing, ongoing discussion about the relevance and the import of the data that comes out of this, these types of reports, whether it be annual reports or compilation of years. And the, quite frankly, the need for this to be instituted in each of the 58 counties of the state, not just some of the counties of the state, because it has, at least in our experience, obviously led to some incredible community work to really get at what is, you know, probably the single most important thing that we are charged to do as an elected body, which is really look after the welfare of the youngest among us. And so I want to applaud you, the entire team. You guys do incredible work. It's always, it's a weird, it's a weird emotion, because you don't ever want to really express delight in, you know, reviewing the circumstances around something as serious as child deaths, but at least when you do commit yourselves to understanding the data and making sure it's a very honest assessment of the circumstance around trends, especially in this county, when we get this kind of good news, it really hits home. So you're to be commended for just doing some incredible work, and I really do thank you, and I think the rest of the community does as well.
Well, thank you very much, again. This is based on a lot of hard work from a lot of people. I get to be the spokesperson, but there are a lot of people involved in this.
I understand, thank you.
Thank you, and I will convey that to all of them.
Thank you.
Well, I will try to convey that to all of them. Okay. In terms of the recommendations, the first one is really based on a recommendation from last year that was accepted, and that was to put together a multidisciplinary team to review child abuse and neglect fatalities over a longer span of time, to see what else we can learn when we do that multi-year, 12-, 13-year process. And that team has been identified and is in place, and we are recommending a continuation. We think it will take easily another year to really do that process and to come back with a very thoughtful analysis to you. And this process is in partnership, by the way, with the Child Protective Services Oversight Committee, and what we're asking that it be able to do is identify trends, develop recommendations for prevention, and identify existing assets, services, and frameworks. And I'm very happy to tell you that as a part of the process of looking at that, that work and child abuse prevention- work in child abuse prevention, Sacramento has been selected as one of 22 counties and many more applied to be participating, starting Thursday, in a two-day summit in which each county is going to be having facilitated work done to begin the process of, of developing a countywide child abuse prevention plan. And that conference is sponsored by the County Welfare Directors Association, Department of Social Services Office of Child Abuse Prevention, and Strategies 2.0, which is part of the Child Abuse Prevention Center. So we're very much looking forward to that. The second recommendation is to expand neighborhood-based programs focusing on third-party homicides through violence prevention, violence interruption, and intervention. There is some existing infrastructure around that, and the team feels strongly that there needs to be expanded coordination among the partners, including law enforcement, to really address third-party homicides. The third recommendation is to continue and expand training and education regarding infant sleep-related deaths. There is a partnership that's hard at work in this, and each year, well over 1,000 families have direct services typically in their homes and have an offer of a crib, and it certainly appears from the data in the last couple of years that that's been very effective where the program has been implemented. So it seems warranted to look at trying to find a way to expand it into the additional neighborhoods. The fourth recommendation is to provide more follow-up services for infants discharged from neonatal intensive care units and increase and develop education about the availability of Medi-Cal and prenatal care to women. And this recommendation is actually a combination from both the CDRT and the Fetal Infant Mortality Review. And it's, what the recommendation really entails is providing a clinical path upon departure from NICU, providing financial support to the, to Public Health Nursing High-Risk Infant Program to serve families without private insurance, to allow infants born, paused, tox, or neonatal abstinence syndrome to qualify for the high-risk program, and to continue the Medi-Cal and prenatal care education, really looking to target populations that currently need that support. The fifth recommendation is continue efforts to reduce the death rate of African-American children in Sacramento County. And clearly, the efforts and the changes so far warrant the need for continuing, if not expanding, those services and activities. And finally, the last recommendation is to develop countywide protocols for public-private agencies who engage with families that have one or more of the top three risk factors, essentially saying that we need to have strong coordination when we see particularly these three risk factors with the private agencies who are doing services, as well as the county and other agencies who may be identifying these families early on as they come to them for services, so that we can, we can really try to have the protocols and the systems in place. This is really a systematic recommendation so that we get to these families before they become another statistic and another fatality. So that is the conclusion of this portion of the presentation, and I'm going to invite Dr. Casiri, who's right behind me, and she will give you the presentation on the Fetal Infant Mortality Review, and then Chris and I will also come back up in case you have any other additional questions.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. I'm Dr. Olivia Casiri, Public Health Officer. So I'm going to talk about the fetal infant mortality review. This differs from the child death review in that the fetal infant mortality review focuses on the pregnancy period from 20 weeks gestation to full term and includes deaths in utero, which means that the baby dies before it's born, as well as preterm births where the baby dies soon after delivery. And this is the second year that Public Health or the Department of Health Services has contracted with CAPC to do this review, so I'm not going to present any trend data, but in the future, we're hoping to, to be able to present some trend data. So in 2016, there were 95 fetal and infant deaths that made the criteria for review, and 55 of these were reviewed, including 10 preterm births. Sorry, I hadn't changed the slide. So prenatal care is very important because this is a period when the healthcare system has an opportunity to screen the mother and identify any factors that might affect the pregnancy, and it's also an opportunity for intervention. And of course, the earlier prenatal care is initiated, ideally in the first trimester, which is the first 12 weeks of gestation, the better the chances of making a positive impact. And you can see from these results that close to one-fifth of the cases that were reviewed had either late initiation or no documentation of prenatal care. The risk factors identified included things like exposure to drugs and alcohol, diabetes, obesity, complications of the placenta, for example, placental abruption where the placenta separates too early from the womb. And the other factors include previous pregnancy loss as well. One of the factors that, or one of the trends that we have noticed recently that is really worrisome in relation to pregnancy-related infections is that we have had several cases reported to Public Health of mothers who have shown up for delivery, no prenatal care, and they end up having an adverse birth outcome and are positive for syphilis. Usually, these are women who have mental health issues and are homeless, so it's something that we're hoping that we can get some, some additional resources to be able to, to deal When you, when we analyze the demographics, it shows that there's still a persistent disparity of deaths for African-Americans. So compared to the proportion, 9% of births, African-Americans presented 12% of the deaths. And if you look at the other race ethnicities, the proportions are about the same for births and deaths, so there was no disparity. Some of the risk, family risk factors included poverty, and that's something that you have discussed in 62% of the cases that were reviewed, and also involvement of Child Protective So the main recommendations that came up, one, of course, again, is the emphasis on prenatal care and making sure that we look at ways of reducing the barriers to prenatal care for women, and also providing education to make sure that women know the importance of prenatal care. As noted, 21% of the cases that were reviewed had late or no prenatal care. The other important thing is expanding resources to include and target preconception, because during the preconception care, that's an opportunity to actually address the health of the mother. As you recall, some of the risk factors included things like hypertension, obesity, and diabetes. And if we can get the mother in good health prior to pregnancy, then the chances of a healthy pregnancy and delivery are increased. One thing that's not listed here, recently, the Board of Supervisors approved an application by the Department of Health Services. We received an allocation from the State Department of Public Health to, to work with the community to look at factors that contribute to premature birth, because this is one of the main factors that leads to adverse outcomes. So the initiative, initiative is called Prenatal Equity Initiative, and so we're working with First Five, as well as with community advocates to look at factors, and also with the hospitals, to look at factors that contribute to preterm birth, and we're hoping that that will help us in being able to reallocate resources and maybe actually even apply for new money that might be coming down to help us with the work.
Okay, Dr. Casiri, take a breath there. Supervisor Natale.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Casiri. I wanted to ask a question, part of what I ask about some on this slide is that 21% of the infant mortality cases had late or no prenatal care. And then on the previous slide, you had the Child Protective Services cases, a referral were, in this case, 42% of the cases.
Correct.
Is there any correlation between folks who had a, some contact with CPS and then either case or referral, and then, as you said, getting education out, where there's contact with the county and/or service provider in the CPS case? It would seem to me that it's essential, again, there's, that risk factor is known right now, and once it, as it relates to the statistics, anyway. So if there's 21% that don't either have late or no prenatal care, it would seem to be part of that ought to be incorporated and that there probably ought to be very close to zero, the folks that don't, you know, have some engagement, obviously it still requires the parent to take advantage of that care, you know, to the opportunity. So I guess I'm, if you understand my question, I want to know of that 21% that either have late or no prenatal care, how many of them were in the CPS category? And if so, it would seem to me it might lead us to think that we need to be very clear, not just about investigating the referral case that comes to us, but also, obviously, recognizing that risk factor, that, you know, nearly half.
That's a good question, and I would have to go, go back and see how many of those actually were related. But there is some correlation in that what you find oftentimes is for the, the mothers that either delay or refuse to go for prenatal care, oftentimes, they are afraid that if they do go to the doctor, especially if they have drug issues, that they will be reported to CPS or that their children will be taken away. Our hope is that as we are moving away from criminalizing drug addiction and recognizing it as a disease, that we'll get to the point where we can actually make it so that there's the women who actually, and these are people who really need the help, the prenatal care, that they will not be afraid to come forward because they will know that they're going to get help and that they will not either get into trouble with law enforcement or CPS. Another good thing, as Sheila mentioned, is that as we're working towards looking at abuse prevention and having this multi-agency group come together, including Public Health and CPS, as well as other partners, that we will be able to look at these factors and look at ways of being able to identify mothers who are pregnant, who actually may, do have risk factors and do come to the attention of CPS, so that there, we can have maybe a referral process where they can refer them, because from what I understand, and Michelle might correct me if I'm wrong, is that if a woman is pregnant but there are no other children in the home, that CPS is limited into what they are able to, to do with that mom. But if they are able to refer that case to Public Health, then we would be able to look for ways of, of providing care for that, that mother.
Well, I appreciate you sharing, let me probe that a little further. So not to mistake what you just said, is that there may be limitations, but the, currently CPS could not refer to Public Health if, if there's no other children in the household?
They can, but I think that's, that's an area that we can improve.
Okay.
Because right now, there are a lot of limitations as to what they're able to share, but if we are able to talk through it and develop a referral system, I think we would be able to make it easier to make those referrals.
Well, and it may end up, you know, it may be limited number, but if you save one infant's life, then that's, in my view, well worth it. And I, because I just wanted, and that's an important point, I didn't want to lose it, but because, going back to the percentages, and again, what lies behind them, but with the 21% had later no prenatal care and that, to your point about, I was going to ask about the AOD, the exposure to alcohol or drugs, particularly illicit drugs, but it said hospitals report a fetal exposure to drugs or alcohol in 20% of the cases, and so it's nearly, you know, and yeah, one more slide. And so, I think, yeah, that one there. And so if I take 21%, and to your point, folks that don't want to because they believe they may be arrested and/or other consequences come of that, I guess I'd like to see is, maybe for the report that comes to us next year or even before that, some, you know, beyond just the, the data and the correlations, but to your point, I appreciated your comment about strategies that we can employ right now, from what we know this very moment, that would help us, certainly respecting people's rights, and the, you know, whatever constraints are within the framework of the law, but that would allow us to, you know, dive a little deeper into this in a way that maybe makes a difference in, you know, whether an infant lives or dies.
Yes, I'm very hopeful that we will have more to report for next time around, and we will also have an opportunity to work more with CPS. So I'm hoping that with the next report, we'll also be able to give an update on a referral system that we've been able to work out.
And could we have a report before the next time we see this, a year from now, again, with, certainly with you working with Michelle and other folks in your respective departments' divisions, as to how we might, as I said, you know, immediately, if we aren't already doing it in some cases, be able to implement some things that, again, that would result in, you know, strategies be employed long before we would see another report, which, again, this is all looking back anyway, so.
Yes.
Okay, that'd be helpful. Thanks, Doctor.
So we are all here and available if you have any other questions or comments.
Are there any other questions? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For item 55, it's the Fiscal Year 2017-18 Annual Report on the Black Child Legacy Campaign.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Bruce Wagstaff, Deputy County Executive for Social Services. Very pleased to be here today to start you off on this discussion that you heard some great news about in the last presentation. I wanted to talk a little bit about the work that your various departments have been involved in, first of all, in this very important campaign, in close partnership with members of the community, and certainly, we want you to hear from those members of the community as quickly as possible, but I thought we would just start with some very quick comments to let you know that the investments that you've made in resources for your departments have really paid off, and that the Departments of Probation, Human Assistance, Child, Family, and Adult Services, as well as the First Five staff, have indeed been very active and committed participants in the Black Child Legacy Campaign, and are committed to continuing that work and have really made extra efforts to ensure that the knowledge is extended throughout their departments about the importance of this work. There's a few slides that goes to this coming up, but I think what I'll do is, I'll just summarize to say that all three of those departments are very much embedded in the seven community incubator leads that you're going to hear something about. They are very much involved in being co-located at those sites, but they also participate in multidisciplinary team meetings, they advocate for and connect families to resources, they certainly help families navigate the CPS and probation systems, and they intend many important events within the community. You're going to hear in a minute from First Five in terms of their evaluation work of the campaign, which is going to be some very good news and very encouraging, but I just wanted to let you know that the various departments are committed to this. We've put the resources that you've allocated to good use, and we're very pleased to have that involvement. So I wanted to note that, but also thank the staff in the various departments for their excellent work on this and their close partnership with the community. And I wanted to ask Kim Pearson, who's Division Manager for CPS, to come up to briefly talk about our cultural broker. about our cultural broker program, which is a very key part of our involvement in the effort. And then after that, Kim has a fan club, after that, we're going to hear from First Five as well.
So, good afternoon, Board, Chair Kennedy and the Board, and I want to thank the department for allowing us a bit of time to talk about the Sacramento County Cultural Broker Program. I think what is significant to state about the Cultural Broker Program in relation to CPS is there are several broker programs within the community. However, there are broker programs that don't do the same work in relation to children who come to the attention and families who come to the attention of CPS. So when we came before you back in 2017 and asked for funding as it relates to the over-representation of children of color who enter into the foster care system, at that point in time, there was 11% of the population age 0 to 17 were African-American. Yet, there was an over-representation in the foster care system in which close to 40% of the children in foster care are African-American. That's significant.
Very significant.
They entered our system at 3.6% more than white children enter into our system, and when they enter the system, they experience 39% of the placement moves, meaning the instability of African-American children who are in foster care move at 39% more than any other children within our system. In addition to that, when we look at the disparity in services we have seen throughout the jurisdictions and across the nation, that children of color don't receive the same level of services in relation to other children in the system. Therefore, when we asked for that investment, we found that as a result of implementing a cultural broker program in which there are brokers who are on the ground, working directly with children of color, families of color, to decrease in several areas. One, to decrease the entries and the coming into the CPS system, as well as to reunify families once they come into the system, as well as identify relatives. We know that when children are placed with relatives, they have a greater success in relation to reunifying with their families. What is also most significant is the fact that as children come before us and families come before us who are in need of, and Supervisor Natoli, this goes to your comment, are in need of links to services, because of the challenges within the over-representation in many systems throughout, not just in Sacramento, but throughout the states, there is a distrust in relation to government entities. And as a result of that distrust, families will not engage or connect as we would like them to. The brokers that we have partnered with who are here today, and you're going to have an opportunity to hear from them, and I would just ask if the brokers who are present today from Better Life Children's Services, the Sacramento Children's Home, as well as the brokers that we have partnered with, with Sierra Health Foundation, as well as Robert's Development Center, to please rise. We hope that you're going to have an opportunity to not only just hear from them in relation to the services that they've been able to provide, but to also be able to hear from the families who've received the services via the Culture Broker Program. I know that First Five's broker program has been doing wonderful things, but we really wanted to take this moment to pause and think through and share with you the fact that the African-American families that come to the attention of CPS are in dire need of this support, this advocacy, and because of the number of culture broker programs within the community, we are looking at a name change as it relates to CPS. I also just want to call out that when we began direct services last year, we have serviced 73 families thus far. There are approximately seven brokers that can carry a caseload of 12. We are going to be reaching capacity very soon. Just this week, we did a presentation, or last week, we did a presentation to the court and council. Very well received, the court and council within CPS and the dependency courtrooms conveyed how the brokers, when they are present, how they see how they help the families to navigate the large system that CPS is. They see the links. It's not just about providing resources of food and diapers, although that does come into play, but it really is in relation to ensuring that families are able to connect with services and they are able to reunify successfully and safely. We always put safety at the forefront. We do a satisfaction survey with those families. We received a 90% return rate on the satisfaction surveys, and from those, absolutely. From those surveys, what we found was that families conveyed that they better understood the safety and risk factors as it relates to why they are involved with CPS, and that they increased the level of trust between CPS and the families. And that is the work of the brokers advocating on behalf of the families. We also want to recognize that our social work staff and the manner in which they received the cultural brokers and teaming with them and working with them has been absolutely amazing. You know, sometimes when you bring in a third party to work with a family, there can be some challenges in regards to how they team together and work together on behalf of the families, and we have not seen that, so we absolutely want to thank our CPS social work staff. And I would be remiss if I did not thank those social workers who are outstationed at the CILs, and I know that they are here because I see them, so stand up. Stand up. And then finally, I would just like to also thank the Sierra Health Foundation in regards to how we have been able to partner together. It is through that umbrella of the Black Child Legacy Campaign and the work that we are doing collectively, where in 2019, we will move forward in order to really embed the Culture Broker Program more closely with the Community Incubator Leads, and to really see how far the success we can achieve will go. In addition, just this week, sorry, I'm closing, just this week, we received a total of 12 referrals, and that is going to put us very close to capacity. So our hope is that we can continue to do this good work collectively and begin to see those reductions and safely reunify families so that they do not have to be raised in foster care. Thank you. Questions?
Any questions?
Questions?
Just thanks to you, Kim. You're, you know, full of energy, enthusiasm. Yeah, I think. But I think, obviously, your leadership, that I'm, obviously, of team, I understand that, but teams have leaders, and you're part of that leadership, so thanks for your good work, and I think the results are speaking for themselves, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
I'm Linda Fong-Samara. I'm a program planner with First Five Sacramento, and I'm just here today to give you an update about some of the efforts that we've had at our commission and some of the results that we've seen in our three-year annual evaluation report. So as many of you know, we have been invested in this effort since 2013, and by the time we hit 2021, our commission will have invested nearly $14 million in this cause because we believe that much in this issue, and really in supporting children ages 0 to 5. Our commission focuses on the top three, three of the four causes of disproportionate death, and that is prenatal conditions, infant sleep-related deaths, and child abuse and neglect, homicides. As you can see from this slide, we fund a mixture of basically education campaigns and direct services to really meet families where they're at and provide access at all As I mentioned, this past December, we were very excited to release our three-year evaluation report, which covered 2015 through 2018. And you'll see that our education campaigns really reached out into the community and touched many families with awareness and education. And the Culture Broker Program, we have that as well. We've renamed it Pregnancy Peer Support. But really, that's the one-on-one education and direct support that moms get in the community, and those programs serve 958 women. And one of the exciting things we were able to see is, for women that got the full dosage of services, the data told us they were four times more likely to have a healthy birth. So we know that our programs out there are making a difference. And of the 628 babies that were born, 85% were born at healthy gestational age and weight, so that was a huge success in our eyes. In terms of community impact, you know, Kim mentioned an umbrella. First Five Sacramento is one of the partners in this effort. We're all a part of that big umbrella, and working under collective impact, so that notion that it really does take a village. And I think what you'll see in the next couple of slides from us at First Five Sacramento and also from our partners at Black Child Legacy Campaign and the CDRT review team, is that no matter how you slice and dice the data, we'll have different ways we can slice and dice the data, no matter how you look at that data, everything is pointing at the fact that we are making a difference and we're headed in the right direction, and we're really making an impact, because our whole entire community has invested in this effort. In particular, what was mentioned before, we had a period of time where we were really just pulling everything together and piloting efforts, so I want you to notice shifts particularly from 2015 to 2016 in the next couple of slides. But again, all indications point that we're decreasing the rates of death, and more importantly, we're decreasing disparities in our community. Just really briefly, in terms of preterm births, you can see from this slide, there's been a decrease in both the rate and both the disparity. And the arrows in the bottom will just indicate for you where we did our funding, our piloting in the middle, and on the right hands are the implementation, which is still going on at this point. Low birth weight babies, I know this slide is a little bit confusing because it shows the word increase. There are, you know, little upticks here and there throughout the years, but again, to point out, when we were full implementation across the community, you'll see a dip between When we saw this slide, this is all infant deaths, this is due to all causes. It could be perinatal, infant safe sleep, congenital, all causes of infant death. We were really surprised and shocked and actually really excited to see this particular data point. And that is, when you look at African-American infant deaths from, when you compare 2013 to 2016, there was a 45% decrease in the rate and a 76% decrease in disparity. So again, all of our collective efforts in the community, it's showing that although we have more work to be done, we are headed in the right direction, and we are closing those gaps. And finally, just to show you some change within two specific causes of infant deaths. When we look at the prenatal condition deaths, you'll see, again, there was a slight uptick, but I'd like to point out, again, if you look between 2015 and 2016, there's almost a half-point decrease. So we have a 17% decrease in disparity over that period of time. And finally, I know this has already been mentioned, but we also support infant sleep-related death prevention and education, and so you can see through those efforts, it's been a 54% decrease and 62% decrease in the disparity. We used to use the data point that every other week in Sacramento County, an infant dies of an infant sleep-related death, and half of those are African-American. I think at this point, we can safely no longer say that's the case. So it's due to all, again, all the efforts in the community that are making the significant impact. I know it really quick, I didn't want to repeat everything that was already said, and we want to give opportunity for all of the wonderful partners in the community to speak. So that concludes this part of the presentation. If you have any questions, I'm available. We have Ann Edwards from DHA, Michelle Kass, and Kim Pearson from DCFAS, and we also have Marlin Garber from Probation. Any questions at this point?
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to introduce Chet Hewitt from Sierra Health Foundation and Dr. Natalie Woods Andrews. They are our esteemed co-chairs of the Steering Committee on the Reduction of African-American Child Deaths.
Good afternoon, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm pleased to be back here to report on our, do I have to pull a slide up, or is it going to come up on the side?
I'm getting that ready for you in the back.
Thank you. Pleased to be back here to report on you, with you, on the Black Child Legacy Campaign. I'm going to shorten my remarks as well, there's a few things I want to underscore, because you've heard a lot this afternoon, it's been a long afternoon. I know we're all, at least I'll speak for myself, a little tired here today, it's been a long weekend, but this has been some really extraordinary news delivered here today, and I just want to applaud you and your role in really making this happen. Also want to ask all of the members from the Black Child Legacy Campaign to stand, please. I just really want to be clear that you unleashed an army of folks who are committed to doing some extraordinary things on behalf of children in Sacramento County. And you've seen the data today, extraordinary things are indeed happening. And while we applaud our partners at the county level who have been extraordinary, First Five, Human Assistance, Probation, and Children, Family and Adult Services could not have been done without them, we really also want to acknowledge the incredible contributions that our community CIL members, our crisis responders, our cultural brokers have contributed to this particular effort. One of the things that I say that has really been different about our work has really been the fact that it is okay to be engaged with helping systems. Now, I've never seen anybody walk around with a CPS shirt on. But you can go a lot of cool places and see folks with the Black Child Legacy gear on at marches and celebrations, but we are all proudly displaying our connection to this particular work and our belief that we can change what had been a long history of disparity and death for black children here in Sacramento County. You know the causes of death, prenatal condition, infant sleep-related deaths, child abuse and neglect. This was our charge, to actually reduce that disparity between 10 and 20% over a five-year period. You know, as mentioned earlier, we are part of a collective impact strategy, we are the backbone for that particular work. The committee, the Steering Committee, that has been part of that large umbrella that was described before, has met consistently and talked about policy and strategy and organizing and communications to make this effort go. This particular picture here is a picture of our crisis responders. These are the folks who show up when unfortunate things happen in communities, particularly around third-party homicides, and provide relief for families. Not only are families sometimes victims, although this year, there are far fewer victim families, there are far fewer third-party homicide deaths. Exactly, if you've read the paper recently, zero in the city of Sacramento under the age of 18. They are trained and certified community crisis responders who have volunteered countless hours showing up and assisting families who are in crisis. They have also lent to an effort that actually makes this a county-wide effort. So while many of them live in one of the seven communities that we're focused on, they will show up in any community where there is a crisis. And as you know, that has been a big part of our violence interruption and prevention work, is to get kids who live in South SAC to know that kids who live in North SAC are children too, and whose values are valuable and important. One of our big efforts to do that this year was Kings and Queens Rise, a partnership with the Sacramento Kings, that actually had a countywide basketball tournament hosted by each of those seven communities, so they could see just how vibrant they actually were, and to give kids a chance to interact with one another. And I believe we have a video we'd like to share with you to show you exactly what that looked like, so you can have a part of what was an extraordinary, extraordinary experience as well. Well, this league got started when we really started focusing on, you know, what we should be doing about, you know, third-party homicides and violence in communities. And one of the things that we knew that was really important was to create an opportunity for kids to cross community boundaries, and to do so in a way that was both healthy and competitive. And what better way to do that than holding a sports event? And what better way to do that than holding a sports event?
So this Kings and Queens co-ed league is reaching a variety of young people in our communities that doesn't normally pay on a high school basketball team.
These are kids who are high-risk young people, who are oftentimes not the kids, the type of kids who get to play on their school teams.
Pouring into kids that naturally, normally don't get poured into. You know, they get pulled aside and they get told that they are leaders and they can't do it. And we just try to instill good values and give them the tools to set them up for success.
It's about showing and doing at the same time. It's all about positive workshops. How can I help my friends? Sportsmanship, another way out, something good, and also to meet other people from different parts of the community so that we can be as one throughout the city.
Each community of the eight will get an opportunity to be a host. This gives kids an opportunity to traverse some of those thick of boundaries and gives each of these communities an opportunity to show just how wonderful and vibrant they actually are.
My favorite part is how like, I'm excited to be here. I'm happy. It's like a chance that many people don't get.
Taught me the importance of teamwork.
They didn't make us find them. They like found us.
And it did change a lot of people in the community.
I didn't think it would be tangible, but look at it now. Like, it's literally a whole bunch of people in there that's on fire and they want to give back. And I just want that to continue. And I think that this is a great, great start with Built Black and when things are happening with the Kings.
This is an all-in, all-in Sacramento effort with a lot of folks who have played important Let's start by changing hearts and minds and folks' belief in what is possible. And I think that we've gone a long way in making that happen. And I think that it is showing up in ways that you can't always account for in the data, although the data is critical. And we know that the Child Abuse, the Death Team has done an incredible job presenting that to you today. So thank you very, very much. But as I said in the video, this is an all-in, all-in Sacramento campaign. Also want to call out Kaiser and the other folks who are partners with us in this, in this effort. The Kings, of course, who hosted that final game at Golden One Center. Many of those kids had never been in that facility before. All right? And I remember when I first came in, there was a group of kids dancing around at Center Court. I went to Center Court and I said to them, "What's going on?" And they said, "We're playing on the court that Vince Carter played on." You know, for them, it was just kind of a connection to what's really possible. And I asked the two young men, I said, "Well, you guys, what community you come from?" And two of them are brothers. I think they came from South Sacramento. The other young man was from Oak Park. And, you know, they were just all kids. Neighborhood did not matter. They were competitors on the basketball court. Every child got a chance to play. Over 1,000 people participated. We had 100% retention rate for those particular children. And, you know, I don't think that it is disconnected from the great data you've seen in terms of, you know, not homicides, homicides not taking place in communities throughout our city. Let me transition here. I believe that, oh, next slide is kind of the presentation back up, please?
There, there.
Okay. That's not me. I'll go on even as we're waiting for the slide to come up. The next slide is actually a picture of Margot Santana, who is a cultural broker extraordinaire. She has done some incredible work and is often called upon and asked for by courts to be a cultural broker for many, many families. And she's just representative of the extraordinary cultural brokers who are here as well. Margot, are you here? Could you stand up, please? Every effort needs a Vince Carter. He is a superstar in this regard as well, as well as the other cultural brokers, but really set the tone for what is really possible. Margot, thank you so much for your contributions. Want to talk about some of the numbers. 411 individuals case managed, 461 for sleep education, stress reduction, parenting support, youth transformative learning opportunities, and a profound purpose institute where we're continuing to build the capacity of our groups to do even better than what we've seen here today as we move forward. Want to go to the next slide, which is, you know, really our slide. And you'll see some differences in data. I know that Lyndon and others talked about the calculation, whether they're doing percentages and rates. But if you look at the three-year rolling average, you look at 2016, that dotted line bar, and you see an acceleration in the decline in the rate of death for African-American children. You can attribute that to the collective work that is going on. You can look at some of the goals on the second half of that slide. And many have met some more work to do around perinatal conditions. You simply don't want to do better because other folks have done worse. Closing the disparity in that way is not what we're actually shooting for. This, again, is calculated by rates, and we'll figure out how to adjust that so that it is kind of a better representation, collective representation of what the data says going forward. But, you know, this is not a debate around evaluation and data collection. This is really a celebration of good news across the board for all of us. Many, many partners, over 72 community partners, 512 youth engaged, and a host of system wins from the adoption of safe sleeping protocols at hospitals, the creation of outstation county staff, what we refer to as multidisciplinary teams, a real great partnership with county child active services. And, you know, it really is a coordinated countywide strategy. We have families coming into CILs who don't live in some of the communities where those CILs are located. Quality services are often shopped for by the feet of the folks who are trying to secure them. I mean, people will show up where they feel like they're going to get a dignified, supportive, you know, opportunity to engage in the services that they actually need for themselves and their families. Of course, we've also worked hard to, you know, leverage your investments, over $10.2 million. Of course, the bulk of that coming from the county Board of Supervisors. Great partnership with First Five and the city of Sacramento. But we've also gotten the Board of State and Community Corrections to invest in our violence interruption work, the Cal Vip work, what we call Healing the Hood, a partnership with the Cultural Brokers, which is, again, through the Department of Children, Family, and Adult Services. A Health Net, which provided a cultural broker program for newborn youth. And of course, this year, a Health Foundation. And one you'll see soon, I think on a later slide, which is our new partnership with the Obama Foundation, who are one of 10 sites selected from around the country, who will participate in some of their young men, boys and young men of color programs going forward as well. And I will turn it over to my co-chair before I return.
Natalie?
Well, this certainly has been a day for celebrating with all of the data that has been reported. And we know that through the campaign, that it has taken a very concentrated, a very intentional, very focused set of work that has had to take place throughout our community. And it has been a collective effort, and you've heard about that work, some of it today. It has all been focused on five strategies that we have been implementing through the Black Child Legacy Campaign, and those five strategies are before you. And with these five priority areas, as we've shared in the past, they're very interconnected, very interrelated. And so we know that the critical work that is happening, it does take all of us working together to make that collective impact that you have heard about today. I'd like to just unpack the strategies very quickly. One of the strategies is focused on promoting advocacy and policy transformation. And this has been an opportunity for us to not only focus our work here locally, but there has been notice taken, not only statewide, but also nationally. We've been able to share the information about the work that we've been able to do with the Child Defense Fund, Samuel Proctor Institute in Knoxville, Tennessee. We've also had an opportunity, it's being called upon, to make presentations down in Los Angeles at an event hosted by the California Black Health Network, and that was at their Black Health Policy Summit. And so we continue to share the wonderful work that is happening here in Sacramento County. The news is too good not to share. And so we also not only share that information throughout the nation, but also we're really taking a look within our communities in terms of how do we continue to build that awareness? Not everyone is familiar with the work that's happening through the Black Child Legacy Campaign. But we have truly invested with the funds that have been made available to us to really invest within our communities in building up that leadership. And we call some of that leadership our Community Leadership Roundtable. And through this Community Leadership Roundtable, they work very collectively with our community incubator leads to really come together to learn new skills. They become advocates within their particular communities, and they learn specific strategies that they can, again, help build awareness, not only in their community, but throughout. That's all been focused on taking a look at how we refine our work through quality. It's also been focused on the Cultural Brokers Program, and you've seen some of those representatives earlier today, and also about crisis response. One of the pieces that has been so powerful within the community is actually building up leaders from each of the seven communities. And what you see on this particular slide rose out of an unfortunate situation with Ernie Cardina, who was an innocent bystander in the Meadowview area who was killed, you know, through gun violence, gang violence. And the community in which this occurred, the community incubator leads, as well as the Leadership Roundtable, came together and said, "We need to do something to stop the violence in our community." So they worked with the Black Child Legacy Campaign and elected officials and called a press conference to call for a stop for violence. Without really supporting individuals within our community, we've not seen this type of leadership rise up from within. So it speaks to the strength of the community and what the work of the Black Legacy can do within a community once it is targeted and focused. We have also been able to focus on equitable investment and systemic impact. In order to make a difference in the community, we absolutely have to have that political will, and we also have to be able to develop policies that are really going to help us make that difference. One of the pieces that we know will make a difference is the establishment of the Interagency Children's Policy Council. We've had an opportunity to build that leadership in the local levels from the ground roots up, but it does take a certain level of leadership, a higher level of leadership, who are the policymakers, who are in charge of the finances and the budgets of our counties and our cities, to come together to really talk about how we can utilize the resources in order to make a greater impact within our community. You've heard a little bit about the Cultural Broker Program, and this is a representation of those who are working on behalf of Child Legacy Campaign. They're working very closely in their community incubator leads as those trusted officials within the communities. The third strategy is focused on coordinated systems of support. And again, this is an opportunity for all of our community incubator leads to come together so that they have a united voice, they have a common vision in terms of how they're going to move this work forward. And you see on this slide, representation from each of the seven community incubator leads coming together. They come together on various events. One, we call Technical Assistance Resource Center, in which we bring our individuals together, again, to just continue to build their skills, to help them become knowledgeable about effective practices, help them also learn a little bit more about how we can actually go about conducting some assessments and refining the practices that we know is going to make a difference in our community. One of the other pieces that we have been able to do is to take a look at data. This data has been ongoing, and it also has been an opportunity to bring about accountability within our community incubator leads. And we know that anytime we have an investment, it is important to hold those accountable, but also to measure the impact of the work. This particular chart, as you have seen before, demonstrates the different key areas where we are evaluating quality. We start on the far end, back in December 2016, and then as we move through the progression of indicators, you can see the baseline there in that first set of data. And then you move towards the latter end of the chart to the right, and you can see where we are at this point, increasing the level of quality and the impact that these community incubator leads are making throughout. We've also had an opportunity to implement what we call participatory action research, and that is an opportunity to collect and analyze data directly from the neighborhoods, making sure that our youth is involved, to share their voice in the work that they are doing in terms of understanding what this means for them and their community and the impact that they can have. One of the things that I would like to do at this point is to call up Danielle. She is from the Arden Arcade Community Incubator Lead, Danielle Lawrence. And she has been working very diligently with our youth on participatory action research. And they are taking a look at how they can utilize their voice to share their thoughts, their feelings, and how they can make a difference in the community. So they have a presentation.
Yes, thank you. I am Danielle Lawrence. I'm a Director of Mutual Assistance Network. But more importantly, I am honored to stand before you as the lead of the Black Child Legacy Incubator in Arden Arcade. I've been asked to highlight some of the great work our youth have accomplished over the past couple of months. In October of last year, Arden Arcade was asked to lead a collective youth voice project for all seven of the Black Child Legacy neighborhoods. The intent was to engage the youth in discussion, activities, and decision-making surrounding the issue of third-party homicide. And thinking about how to best shape this project, it was most important for us to ensure we ended the project with some tangibles. We opted to focus on healing and arts. Our amazing team had the privilege of meeting individually with all seven neighborhood youth groups. The first session focused the youth in discussion around how the third-party homicide has affected them and how it has affected their neighborhoods. We then asked the youth, "If you could choose someone who has been lost to third-party homicide in your neighborhood, who would that be?" The second session focused more on healing activities and hearing directly from the families of the youth that had been lost to violence. A huge thank you to the families who took their time to come and speak with our youth. They spoke their truth, and the youth were able to gain a greater understanding of the family's emotional healing journey and were able to better connect with the oh-so-real impacts of violence. Most importantly, the youth were given tools and expressed a greater commitment to violence prevention and interruption, not only for themselves, but for their neighborhoods. This process was followed by artist David Gonzalez, who was intently capturing the emotions and words expressed so that he could depict the loved ones in art. One of our tangibles is the collection you see behind you, behind me, across the back. Seven pieces for seven neighborhoods. This project was amazing to lead. The positive impacts that have been felt far and wide, and in many ways that we didn't anticipate. I want to thank the youth team, the team that actually met with the youth. We had some really awesome people in there in the room. Can you please stand? Lastly, the individual neighborhood convenings of youth gave way to those youth identifying youth leaders to represent their neighborhoods in a collective youth council. Those youth leaders met several times to begin to dissect issues, systems, policies, and possible solutions to the problems that affect them. Those youth are here today to share their thoughts.
Del Paso Hikes.
Oak Park.
North Highlands, Foothill Farms.
Arden Arcade.
Fertile Stockton.
Meadowview.
Valley High.
We are the youth of Sacramento.
Despite our locations and our differences, we all have something in common. We have all gone through hardships, witnessed gang violence, and lost someone. We are the forgotten children who have been neglected and disrespected for the color of our skin. We are tired of waiting around for people who don't understand our struggle nor listen to our side of reality. So once again, we come before you to ask for immediate funding for resources like youth-led programs, because contrary to popular belief, we not only care Because contrary to popular belief, we not only care about our communities, we want to make them better places. We need programs such as mentoring, tutoring, and ideas from our peers, rap battles, and block parties that include transportation.
We want the community to also play a part in this by offering parenting programs that provide support for low-income parents in single-parent homes in need of desperate help, community police who have restorative justice training and knowledge, who also understand and aim to make connections with Black and Brown youth in low-income neighborhoods. We also believe vacant buildings and lots should be utilized for safe homes and the youth programs previously mentioned.
As teens who have spent most of our adolescent lives in Sacramento, we have seen many things and heard many stories. It's hard to ignore the truth. Our generation has lost its way. Children are becoming defiant because of the amount of adult stress that has been put on them, leaving them only listening to their peers. Most adults have become silent, have written us off as a lost cause.
Except for the Child Black, Black Child Legacy Campaign. And we thank them for this opportunity to stand before you today, showing that our youth are paying attention to our situation and taking any measures to change it. Mentors have become almost nonexistent, like the programs we asked for will give teens and adults a place where they could be peaceful, have fun, and learn at no cost. These programs will provide a new hope for everyone. We needed this yesterday. We needed this three months ago. We needed this when.
Lamar McCants died.
We needed this when.
Timothy Jeter died.
We needed this when.
John McGee died.
We needed this when.
J.J. Klavvo died.
We needed this when.
Breontae Whitaker died.
We needed this when.
Nutter died.
We needed this when.
Win Samir died.
We needed this when Stephon Clark died. Not only did we need it then, but we need this now before another promising life is taken from us. We would like to end off with a quote well said by the famous icon, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Our lives become silent about the things that matter.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for listening to our important voice. We appreciate this opportunity and look forward to seeing the change to come. Thank you.
I hope that you see, you know, how profoundly important our young people have been to this particular effort. And in the years to come, who knows which one of those researchers who are just before you will be in front of this body, if not sitting on the other side of this dais, talking about things that young people need and speaking from a level of experience, given the kinds of exposures they're actually having as well. So, thank you. And another round of applause for our young people. And I'll be briefing the last few slides. You know, 2017, 18, great year. Lots of unprecedented radio and print media. Twenty-four stories over the course of the year, about two a month. Coverage from The Bee, The Observer, Fox 40, SAC News, and Review, KCRA, ABC 10, Capitol Public Radio, and other news outlets as well. You know, we're famous for our MLK marches. And you'll see folks out there in green shirts, now several generations of them. The one from the first year, the second year, and the third year, scarves and in different colors, all representing our community commitment to this particular work. And I said, it's become cool to wear your green scarf or your green sweatshirt, no matter where you are in the city of Sacramento. I've had people walking up to me and asking me, "Which? Where can I buy that?" And we tell them, you know, you have to earn it. So, you have to earn it through your work. And I'm also involved in podcasts and other strategies to spread the good news about our particular work. We've been at conferences across the country. I'm often trying to figure out where Kendra Montgomery, who we all should congratulate for extraordinary work. Where Kendra is on any given day of the year. And I can just tell you that recently, she's been at Grant Makers in Health, the American Public Health Association National Meeting, and it was in California. A couple of weeks ago, she was at MIT, actually presenting on this particular work as well. It is getting noticed in places where people are struggling with similar issues as well. So, you know, we are, you know, your question you asked last year, Phil, was, "Are we telling people what we're doing?" Well, we're accepting every invitation we have because we have a story to tell and now great data to back up the impact this is actually having. Next slide, just a collection of things that we're actually doing. People everywhere participating, sometimes formally associated with the work, sometimes just moved to be engaged because they understand how important it is. And while there's always opportunities to tell good news, you know, sometimes we're dealing with pretty tragic incidents as well. This is the family of Stephon Clark. And after his tragic death, the Meadowview CIL stepped in to support that family. This is a ribbon-cutting, where the backyard where Stephon died was redone. Improvements were made to the home in the front yard for the grandfather, who was in a wheelchair. It was an expression of community love and support, and the kind of things that systems can do for families in need, despite the situation that they find themselves in. And to really make a deep and abiding impact in that individual's life and their family's life, but also sending a really powerful message to community that where there are challenges that a family is facing, there are systems and nonprofits and other organizations who will step up and be of assistance. I have to call out Ms. Jackie, as she is known. I know she's here today. Yolanda, counterpart Yolanda, who I, now, I can't even tell you. There's not enough time for me to tell you all the things that she actually did for this particular family. I could be here for much more time than this. I knew Ms. Jackie was here, so it wasn't a real question, because Ms. Jackie is wherever she needs to be to make change happen. That's for sure. So, thank you, Ms. Jackie. It's extraordinary to be able to partner with you. We are indeed making good on a promise. You know, the data, forty-five percent reduction over African-American deaths, a seventy-six percent decrease in disparity. And I'll just say this, you know, I've been in this business now for forty years, forty years. And I've seen changing rates from caseloads in child welfare to death rates for children. But I think this is the first time I've ever seen a disparity be decreased at the same time. So, it is an extraordinary, extraordinary feat accomplished by a community of individuals who are deeply committed to a result. I want to thank you Supervisor Serna for beginning us on this particular journey, and for the other four members of this body for being supportive, leaning in, and doing what we all knew to be right, to take some risk, as any great institution does, because it has made a difference in lives and children who are here today, who might not otherwise be but for this particular work. There are a lot of things that will be called to account for when our days end, but saving a life of a child will be something that I can tell you will be on your side when that day comes. I talked about the extent of the partnerships we have, ever-growing, just the newest one in the center. I think it's a real recognition of the kind of national attention this work is getting as well. I also want to say, lastly, a lot of good news. Data for 2016 is incredible. I'm ecstatic about what we've been able to do. I think we've proven what's possible, but we have to also show a level of persistence and state of course. I'm sure there'll be some blips and changes in the data over time, but I'm hopeful that our resolve will be strong. And I think we'll continue to see incredible, incredible outcomes that are the envy, the envy of communities all across this nation. Thank you.
All right, we do have about twenty-five speaker slips. Of course, there really is nothing more important that this board does than this work, so we want to have everybody have an opportunity to say what it is that they want to say. At the same time, don't feel like you have to take the whole two minutes. And we'll start with Geraldine Borack.
Thank you very much to the Chair and to the Board of Supervisors. I'm Geraldine Borack, and I have the pleasure of being the Presiding Judge of the Juvenile Court here in Sacramento County. In 2010, I went from my other assignment to an assignment as a dependency judge. And I can say I have stayed there until 2018, when I became the Juvenile Court Presiding Judge and moved over to the juvenile justice side of the Juvenile Court. The remarkable thing is that when I see these children on both sides of the Juvenile Court, they are the same children. They have the same problems. They come from the same troubled neighborhoods. They come from the same troubled families. They have the same needs to, for us to help make their families better, to make them safer, to make their community safer, and to help them to understand how to navigate in this world so they can be successful adults. It is the goal of, the law tells us, that the Juvenile Court must make certain that the system does not remove children from their families unless it is necessary to protect their welfare and their safety. If we do have to remove them, we are told by the Welfare and Institution Code that we have to get them back as soon as possible by helping to make their family safe. When I first came to the Juvenile Court, there was a lot of mistrust in my courtroom. I tried to dispel that. And what I've seen over the course of the years that I have been in the Juvenile Court over these nine years is that it is definitely improving. Our caseloads are down. And I'm here to say, I guess I'm going to quote Benjamin Franklin, "An ounce of prevention is indeed worth a pound of cure." You know it from a financial aspect. Children in foster care are very expensive. And we, as a system, don't do very well raising children. We do much better, as you have seen today, if we can make their families safe and get them home to their families. So, I thank you. This is an absolutely wonderful effort on the part of this community. I'm certain that you are all aware of our new governor, Governor Newsom's, ideas about helping all children in the system, whether they're on the juvenile justice side or on the child welfare side, to be able to get to a place where they can live safe, productive, nonviolent lives. I think you're taking a step in the right direction. And maybe since we are right across the street from the governor, or a couple of blocks away, we can show him the model of what he wants to achieve. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Yolanda Stevenson. Yolanda Stevenson. And that will be followed up by Latonya Mosley.
Hello. My name is Yolanda Stevenson, and this is Linnea Williams. She is one of the families that we assisted at the Meadowview that would like to speak.
Hello. Well, when I first came into the Black Child Legacy Campaign, I was seven months pregnant with an active warrant out for my wrist. And when I met Ms. Yolanda and Ms. Jackie, they immediately got on board and helped me find things that would get things done at a timely manner. Because I only had till I turned twenty-one to get it done, or it would be permanent. So, yeah.
You got them done.
We got it finished. She helped me get everything done. Everything from community service to finding a new probation officer. I didn't have any medical, anything to check on my baby for about like three months. And towards the end of my pregnancy, everything was fine. Everything was finished and getting finished. So, yeah, that was a blessing for me.
Who's the little one?
Who's the little one, Lorraine?
What's the name of your baby?
Her name is Zuri Nicole. Yeah, she's about seven months now.
Thank you. Latonya Mosley, followed by Linnea Williams. Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Latonya Mosley, and I am here with my team from the Arden Arcade Black Child Legacy Campaign Community Incubator Lead. We have been working diligently for three years to reduce the disparities of African-American child deaths in our community. And we are here today to tell you about what we've been doing and to ask for your continued funding and support. We are heavily involved in youth programming, both in our local San Juan Unified School Districts, as well as working with Project Optimism, who provides one-on-one mentorship, college preparation and promotion, and community engagement such as Feeding the Hungry. We also facilitated the Youth Voice Advocacy Project, which was the breeding grounds for the incredible artwork you guys see around the chambers today. We hold a monthly community engagement meeting called Community Impact Group, where neighborhood residents are invited to share their needs and ideas about how to better our neighborhood. Our MDT family continues to provide ongoing support and case management with minimal barriers for success for our families. We work in tandem with many community partners, such as Her Health First, San Juan Unified School District, Black Infant Health, DHA, CPS, and Sacramento County Probation, just to name a few. Recently, just to highlight some of the work that we've done, we recently had a mom come into our facility who was brand-new to Sacramento County. She had no family here, a three-year-old special-needs child, and had just recently moved from Reno, Nevada. Her and her three-year-old daughter were sleeping in her vehicle. She didn't have any income coming in because she couldn't work due to having to care for her child. Within a very short span of time, probably about three weeks or so, we were able to get her connected to Sacramento Self-Help Housing, who comes to our center. They were able to get her connected to a transitional housing program, and she was able to get some days from DHA in the motel. At the very end of her motel vouchers, which was, I think, seven days, on the seventh day, she received a call from Transitional Housing and was informed that she had received a spot in that program for her and her daughter to have residency. And she was able to move in the very next day with her child. And so they went from sleeping in a vehicle, renting a U-Haul to put her things in storage and sleeping in that, having to return to U-Haul and thinking that her and her daughter were going to be sleeping outside during the storm, to having stable housing, to getting her daughter connected to Auto Regional for Services and Evaluation, as well as working to find and maintain employment. And like I said, that was all in about a span of three weeks. And so, that's just to show that with the partnership that we have, the team that we have, and the family that we have, and the support of the Sierra Health Foundation and other Black Child Legacy campaigns, we were able to support that mom with finding all of these resources that she had no idea how to even access because she wasn't a resident of Sacramento County. We also recently hired our two community intervention workers who are tasked with case-managing some of our most at-risk youth in our neighborhood. They are the first responders in supporting youth in our families in neighborhoods in violence, interruption, and prevention. And so, thank you for allowing me the time to speak to you guys today.
Thank you. Thank you. Candy Calhoun. No? Okay. Tiffany Garner?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, everybody. I am, what, I'm a... Ms. Tony's client. I want to say more of a true success story. I want to say more of a true success story, should I say. I say a success story due to the fact that I was homeless for two years, okay? And I met Ms. Toni at a liquor store, and I was pushing, I was inside the liquor store. And my cousin, she seen my cousin standing out with my stroller with all my baby stuff and all my belongings and stuff, and just a hot mess. We was up in there buying snacks and zuzu wamwams and things like that. And I come out, and she was talking to my cousin. I'm nervous, y'all. Excuse me.
All right.
It's okay.
I'm so blessed, I'm so blessed for having these organizations in my life. Because without Ms. Toni ever coming to the liquor store, I don't know where I'd be today. I'd, from her being just a pregnancy coach, you know, and taking the distance for going higher majors and just over beyond her expectations of, her goals as of what she do. She's beautiful, and I don't know what else more to say. Right now, I'm in my own little sanctuary, as my own little spot, I want to call my home. And I'm working on getting a real stable home through VOA. I don't know. I don't know what to say. I'm just blessed. I'm just blessed for the organization of Black Mothers United and Black Child Legacy. I appreciate y'all's whole foundation and their movement of what they're doing and what they're trying to do, because they are prospering.
Thank you.
This is Candy Cunningham. Candy is a product of one of the Culture Broker Programs under the CPS.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Sorry. Got it. Go ahead.
Candy's a product to show you that her kid came home, standing right here with us today with the hard work of Culture Broker. So, I'm going to let Candy share her story.
Hi, I'm Candy Calhoun. I actually went through a tough time of getting my kids back. And I got them back literally two days before Thanksgiving. And so, I'm like really blessed and thankful. And then, around that time, I got introduced to Margot and Toni, and I'm like really blessed to have them in my life right now. I was currently pregnant when I met them at the end of my trimester. And I didn't have no clothes, nothing for my baby. They told me that they can help me get this stuff. I was really struggling to get it. They came to visit me in the hospital around the time I had my baby, came to my home to make sure I had everything for my baby for when she arrived. And they also helped us get furniture for our house. And still, to this day, they're helping me get furniture, like getting a couch, bed for my kids and me. I'm just really thankful for the program, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Kenya Fagbemi. Kenya? Okay. Reverend Alice Baber Banks.
I heard my name. Kenya Fagbemi with Her Health First. I just had a quick comment, which was, the families that we are serving and the, all the information that you heard today, we heard you talk about those three babies that died to sleep-related death. And we all had that aha moment, that those babies weren't in the communities where we are. And a lot of our moms are being, because of the housing crisis, are being pushed further out. And so, it's even more critical that we have these services in place because we are capturing those moms and those families and assuring that they stay connected even when they are further out. Our agency provides that transportation during those critical moments and making sure that they don't fall between the cracks, because they're pushed into communities that they're not as familiar with. It's harder to navigate services if you're not connected to someone. So, thank you all for what you do, and thank you all for allowing us to do this work.
Thank you.
I'm Aliyan Mufi Hassan. Pastor Banks has let me come in front of her. I have to go. I have a 5:30, another 5:30 meeting. And I just wanted to, I'm going to be really brief. The NAACP supports those programs and activities that provide a positive outcome for our communities of trauma, our communities that are experiencing trauma. And this project is one of those projects that has done, that has addressed those issues. But what I wanted to talk about, because you heard all the stats, is the staff. The staff at Sierra Health has just been wonderful. They go the extra mile, and they didn't have to. The programs that are involved with this project, they were involved long before they were funded. They stayed with this project. This is one of those projects where the community, thanks to you, have been, just needed a long time ago. And so, I am proud of this community, I am proud of this Board of Supervisors. And you know, at one point, we had everybody stand individually. I think we should have everybody stand collectively. Thanks again. From the NAACP and our President, Betty Williams. Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Alice Baber Banks. I'm the proud pastor of Christian Fellowship Ministry Church in Del Paso Heights. I serve on the Steering Committee as the faith representative, and I feel really proud and happy to the success that you have heard today. And so, my basic reason for coming before you is to say thank you. I think that if we look at the, you heard the data today, but if you look at the reason that I think that we are successful is leadership, education, partnership, and community engagement. And what I mean by that is, is getting to the bottom of the issue, dealing with the people in the community and showing them that there is a way better than what they're living now. And I think that with the leadership that we have in the Steering Committee, you are seeing the results, and I am just thanking you right now for your help and asking if you continue to believe in us and continue to help us to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. And after Ray will be Tina Roberts.
I'm going to come with them.
Or with Ray Green. You still get two minutes.
Okay, so I'll go real quick. Tina Roberts, Roberts Family Development Center, and we're one of the incubators in North Sacramento, Del Paso Heights. I'm also a proud member of the Steering Committee. My heart is full of gratitude, gratitude that the people in here, they do the work. They do the work. Thankful to you all for supporting these efforts, and I really believe that we are the model. We are showing other cities how to do this. So, thank you, and I ask you to continue to support us.
Thank you, Tina.
To the Board, Chair, we all want to just stand here today as part of our team. We have John Newsom in the back as well, right here with probation. We just want to give a sincere thank you for allowing us to do this work in conjunction. I'm going to want to highlight three things, and then I'll pass the mic to Margot. Without our inter-agency collaborations, I don't truly believe that we would have been as effective as some of the results have been since the presentations. And I say that because when you unite partnerships, county, and the trust of community collaborations, this is what you get. And I want us to just really focus on that. Our MDT, our multidisciplinary team, is phenomenal. On my right, you see Margot, who's one of our cultural brokers. You have Dominique Kernan, who's now our program manager. And we also have Morel Sanchez, who serves as our community intervention worker. Every week, we meet on Tuesdays. You're more than welcome to come by to say hi to any families, to strategize for those. So far, we've served over 53 families in a six-month period, since June to December. We've also outreach and done intervention efforts to serve over 5,000 youth and young adults in those six months. And I just want to urge you to continue to allow us all to stand here proud, to give hope to the hopeless, peace to those who are in crisis, and maybe we continue to pursue progress for the years to come. And I want to echo one of the recommendations from the CDR team about not just continuing funding, but expanding funding, because it's needed in other areas, and it's needed so that we can continue to inspire and continue to encourage and uplift those youth who are here to pursue their promise. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Margot, are you Margot Santana?
After she says, "Thank you," it's your turn.
Okay, thank you, thank you. What I'd like to say to you all is, the Culture Broker piece, as Mr. Serna used to say, boots to the ground, exactly falls under that umbrella. It's a good piece of work, it helps, and it's very needed in our community. I'm going to tell you just a brief story, how a family came in through Black Child Legacy. The auntie died giving birth to twins. She was a single mother of eight. This young lady didn't know which way to go, she just knew her cousin passed, and she walked into Black Child Legacy Building. I have no idea how it connected, but it worked out very well because when she came in, Black Child Legacy put a referral together for this young lady to try to find resources for her to keep this child. And then, the child ended up in the CPS system, and somehow, that referral came to Del Paso Heights, where this family lived. And today, as I speak, this auntie will be adopting this family, because we did the family tree, and we found out where the family's connected, who we need to get the background checked. We had to go do a home inspection, and then we also linked the family with a black adoption agency, so the navigation can continue, so as they know the culture of adopting. And another thing about it is also the kids. When you take those kids out of their home, they don't come sleeping in their beds, the parents do. So, we want to really work together to help our families, navigate them to the system, teach them safety first, show them that they do not have to recycle themselves back into the system, and that they can be a whole family again one day. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see them here. Pastor Les Simmons? Pastor Simmons, I don't see him. Okay. Ms. Jackie Ropes. And afterwards is Kenneth Duncan next.
Good afternoon, Board members. It's a pleasure to be here, and you guys can call me Ms. Jackie, because that's what everyone calls me. We're the Meadowview CIL. Just want to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing. The Meadowview CIL continues to serve families and a large number of young people in Meadowview of all ages through the Black Child Legacy Campaign. Our CIL has been working hard this year on the healing of a community that's been affected by generational trauma and a community with little or no support. With the integration of the folks that you see behind me, county staff, DHA, CPS, probation, and SETA, through our community-based MDTs, that have been part of, that has been a big part of our success in Meadowview, huge part of our success, and service delivery to all the families that we serve. Right now, our caseload has about 100 families on it, and it is growing fast and rapidly because we have built up a strong relationships with all of the schools in Meadowview, and those school officials are now referring cases from their schools to us to case manage. And it's been a wonderful opportunity to work with the schools and to really make sure that those kids are served like they should be served. Our deeply rooted connection to the community, because I've been out there in that community for 30 years, and the culturally responsive care is where our CIL thrives the most. We cannot do this work without the 100 community partners who believe in this work like we do. We have over 100 community partners that we work side-by-side with. Anytime we hit a speed bump or a bump in the road, they come to our rescue, and it's been wonderful. You cannot do this work without collaboration. You just absolutely cannot. The Meadowview CIL works with families where they are. They come to us where they are, and we work with them where they are, by understanding their strengths and opportunities, and providing them with support, supports, resources, and much-needed services, and treating them with the dignity and respect that they deserve. We have seen the power of the BCLC model. It is a model like no other over the last three years in the life data and the data that was presented here today. And I want to emphasize that life data, because some of the things that we do is not in that data. It's absolutely not in that data. We know this is not a project or a program, it's an ongoing strategy, and we hope that you are planning to continue these efforts beyond 2020. I want to thank you all personally for providing a sense of hope for our community and the families who live in our community. I want to thank you all for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kenneth Duncan, followed by Kim Williams.
Good evening. How are you doing? Thank you for having us. Got my MDT team on the way up here. I'm Kenneth Duncan. I'm from the Greater Sacramento Urban League, and I'm with the Oak Park CIL. And I just want to highlight a little, a lot of what everybody's been saying in the room. This is a business of partnerships, and without these partnerships, to be honest, I don't even know how well-known the Greater Sacramento Urban League would be even known in Oak Park without these partnerships. So, I just wanted to say thank you to you guys. Some of the things we provide, thanks for joining me, my youth, is we provide leadership classes with American Legion High School. We have partnerships with many of the churches in Oak Park. And one thing that we're very focused on and that we're doing every single Friday, rain or snow, is our peace walks. So, every Friday, we do our peace walks, and it's in conjunction with the Pastors Network in Oak Park, as well as SAC PD with Captain Huestead and Chief Hahn. Through our peace walks, we've been able to bridge, definitely bridge gaps in the community between law enforcement and the community. So, a story is, a young man was walking down the street during our peace walks, and he seen a group of police officers, and he saw one of the police officers, said, "That's the guy who actually arrested me." And something came from that conversation, is the kid actually ended up interacting with the cop, having some conversation about what happened, and that bridged, we were able to bridge that gap, and that youth was able to talk with this law, talk with this police officer, and that was something I've never seen. And by the way, I've only been in this work for about a year, and I've never seen anything like the Black Child Legacy Campaign, and I'm just happy to be a part of this program. Yeah, BCLC definitely gives us all one platform to stand on and working towards one common goal. So, we're able to work with other nonprofits around the city and in Oak Park, and we're able to agree on what we're working towards. And like I said, just one common platform is huge, working with the county to probation, to all the other nonprofits in the area, and other companies. Personally, I'd like to invite you guys to attend the peace walk, so you can see firsthand the relationships we're building in the community. So, I would love for you guys to come out. This Friday at 5 o'clock, we'll be at St. Hope Baptist Church, and we'll be walking from 5 to 6 o'clock, and I'll have a route, so please join us.
Is it going to snow?
Come on out.
Kim Williams, followed by Paris Dai.
Hi, I'm Kim Williams. I'm the Hub Director for Sacramento Building Health Communities, but I'm also the
I'm the hub director for Sacramento Building Health Communities, but I'm also the lead for the Stockton-Fruit Ridge, Fruit Ridge-Stockton CIL for the Black Child Legacy. And this is my team of awesomeness right here. There's probably not much I can say that you haven't already heard, but I will say the underlying factor that everyone who has spoken has talked about is the collaborative spirit that this initiative has brought. It doesn't matter if you're in the South, if you're in the North, you're in the middle, when something happens and there's a need, that we know we can pick the phone up and call any one of our CIL friends, and we know they'll be there for us, as well as we'll be there for them. One of the things that we've seen happen that has really expanded in the work has been, really, having the MDT teams a part of our work has been phenomenal. I've been in community work for years. I know I look real young, but it's probably been about 25, 30 years. And when I say, "I wish I had had this kind of relationship when I was in community work," I spent many 14 years with Boys and Girls Clubs, and if I would have had an MDT team in that space, the things that we would have been able to do would have been phenomenal. And so, having these folks on our team, they bring, yes, they're doing the social services that they need to do, but they take the step beyond. Our MDT team took on the responsibility of, you know, they're like, "We need to do something for the families," and did a family night, brought in Black Panther himself showed up. They did movies, they did arts and craft, I mean, they just took this opportunity just to bring families and do what kids don't do anymore, which is just have fun being kids. And bringing that initiative into this work, I mean, we're doing everything with our partners, from whether it's teaching kids how patience and leadership through fishing, whether it's doing parenting classes for moms, and whether it's doing basketball leagues, it's support programs for pregnant moms, it's youth entrepreneurship programs. I mean, we could go, the list goes on, healing circles to heal our young people who have been through so much. And so, by having this Black Child Legacy program, we've been able to break down barriers that we wouldn't have had the ability to do before. So, we really thank you for being bold and being an example across this country for this work. I travel a lot for this work that I do, and I'm speaking about it all the time, and I get questions everywhere I go. We want to know more, we want to hear more. And this is as far back, I was just in Kentucky a month ago, and they were asking about what we're doing. So, people are listening, and they're hearing, and they're watching. We couldn't do it without you, and we thank you for your support and your continued support, and we thank the team that we have here that's sitting out there day after day doing this hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Paris Dai, followed by Donna Carr.
We roll deep. This is how we do it.
Sister Peters.
Is this where?
Hi, I'm Adriana Marshall.
I'm Rosella Robinson.
Hello, again, I'm Tyus Carey.
Hi, I'm Jacob Scott.
I'm Nasir Murchison.
And this is our legacy.
Our North Highlands-Foot Hill Farms Black Child Legacy Campaign is totally committed to being youth-led, letting their voices guide our work, inform our decisions, and shape us as adults for who we are. This one project here is one of the ways that we do, my favorite word now is "ground-truthing." So, a lot of the documents that we submit in our progress reports and other things that we hand out are based on these. This group of young people, they competed in a process to become leaders in a participatory action research project. They were, after they were selected, there was nine youth selected, they were funded to do this work, they learned about child abuse and neglect led by Ross, they learned about the four leading causes of death, the child abuse neglect, perinatal, safe sleep, and third-party homicide. They chose to address child abuse and neglect, and in that child abuse and neglect, they were educated and researched on their own information about ACEs, which is Adverse Childhood Experiences, the five protective factors, and other things around that. Then they were tasked with coming up with a community, an interactive community engagement tool, to positively engage the community and educate them about child abuse and neglect. So, the chalk wall is six feet tall, they created their budget, they made the wall themselves, they came up with their own two research questions, "Families Grow Stronger When They," and the other one was "In Our Community Kids Deserve." They've taken this wall to sports complexes, or sports games, grocery stores, and other events out in the community, and we just ask the question. We ask young people, kids, older people, what is it, "Families Grow Stronger When?" We take their answers. And one of them, it was in "Our Community Kids Deserve," they wrote a home. We found out at that moment that their home had burned down. So, we provided with crystal support, we wrapped them up with support services and got them what they needed, helped them get back into their home, and my time's up.
Well, thank you.
Hi, thank you for having me. I just want to tell everybody here, I'm a parent of a child of homicide, and it's a very sad, it's very sad, it's very sick, I do suffer daily, but today, I am delighted and happy, and I have not felt a lot of joy in a lot of years, but seeing everybody here and being here is one of the most amazing moments of my life. It's a beautiful thing, because it's, when my son passed, immediately Liberty came, I didn't have money, I didn't have, I had broke my hip. I had just broke my hip like two months before he passed. But the light came, a little relief came when Liberty came and said, "We will do your memorial." Wow. And then, when they came and said, "Well, we're doing something in the background, we're working on supportive services to help you," Donna. And they came and got me and told me about what they were doing, and they did an art project, and the joy that that brought to my family is just, I don't even have words. But I just want to thank you guys, and I want to tell you that it is helping. Now, the part that's kind of difficult is because I have four boys, and I have three children that were left to deal with the homicide, you know, the down part of homicide. Well, it's all down, but the difficult part. And that's what they are helping me with, with supportive services, because I have a 16-year-old, a 28-year-old, and a 33-year-old, and they suffer because of the homicide. So, about a week ago, I got a call, "Hey, we got supportive services," and I had been looking for these services for years. I didn't really know what to do as a parent of children that suffer from homicide, but today, I do. I know what to do, I know that there's people in place, I know that, I'm very proud of Sacramento County, because they're working in the background, and I know that we're going to help other families nationally. I don't, it's not just individually, but all of us together, working together, this is a good thing, and I'm very proud of everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you. Donna Carr?
That was Donna.
That was Donna, okay. I was wondering.
Wait, let's see if you have an ex-Foot Hill person.
Now, I have Nasser Murchison.
Hi, I'm Nasir. I'm speaking for the North Highlands and Foothill Branch of Black Child Legacy. We run a program every Wednesday at a local church at Liberty Towers. Everyone from our high school is welcomed, and us as the youth run the program. We provide fun activities, a basketball court, open mic at a nice location. We also provide nutritious food and a cooking class to provide the knowledge of health and food that they may have not had if they haven't came. We also volunteer at events and have a lot of fun when we do it. We've gotten very close, like a family. We all started this as volunteering, but this past December, we were all gifted with $100 each, so that was good. So, yeah, we make everyone feel safe, we do things, a lot of things in the community, and the fact that we have such a great program just speaks volumes on how we're changing the culture of our school, our area, and our community.
Well, good job. Thank you.
And thank you so much. I'm like, our MDT is the bomb. We have the best. And thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. We all do. Ladonna Lee? Ladonna? Oh, there we go. And followed by Rakisha Crawford.
Greetings.
Hi.
You can go ahead and speak in the two, we can hear you better. There you go. Yeah, there you go. I'm a little overwhelmed right now, because this is community work, but community is people, it's real people. It's that seven-month-old baby, that seven-year-old little boy standing with his sister and his mom, just reunified. It's those 13, 14-year-olds, 16, 17-year-old kids who stand here and remind us that they needed us weeks ago, years ago, when their friends were dying, when their brothers were dying, when their cousins were dying. Community is people, and we stand here, the three of us, as cultural brokers, assigned to families who have active CPS cases. We work daily with moms and dads who are in the consequence of trauma. I don't know how many people in here are parents, but I know if someone showed up at my house with law enforcement and removed my crying children, that would be traumatic to me. And what we encounter in this work are parents who are, like our mentor says, they're in the fight for their life. Some of them are fighting against the system that took their kids, and they fight so hard against the system, they don't remember to fight for their children. And as cultural brokers, we stand in the gap as liaisons and say, "Listen, separate the fights. We're going to stand shoulder to shoulder with you to fight for your children. We're going to stand shoulder to shoulder with you as you ask for the reform in the system, so that there isn't this disparity, there isn't this disproportionality." And each of us are here to talk about families that we've helped. We invited our families. My star mom, who has successfully finished drug court, successfully graduated from strategies, is on track for reunification, is at work. I had another mother who, whose child was, had her dependency terminated, that child was given to the custody of the father, that mom showed up to speak about her experience, but she had a family visit, she had to leave. These people are being able to go on with their lives because they have support. They're no longer feeling desperate, they're no longer feeling like, "My back is against the wall, and everybody is coming at me." And so, I stand here to speak on their behalf, because it's a great feeling to see women who felt like the system was against them, that they were being treated as monsters, be able to regain some self-respect, to be able to stand in their dignity and continue to move forward and work towards getting their families together.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Rakisha Crawford. I'm a cultural broker as well, based out of the Sacramento Children's Home, under SAC County CPS and the Black Child Legacy. I'm just, I'm nervous, because I haven't, this is bigger than my high school senior project. Just honored to be here.
But the principal's not here, so you're okay, so.
That was a nervous time in my life. I'm just so honored to be a part of this process. I probably have a different approach to this project, and it's primarily because I'm not a parent, so I do take heed in my experiences on a whole different level. I have to take away the fact that I'm not a parent, and I have to look at these other parents, and I have to, you know, help them dig down deep underneath everything that they've been through, everything that they're going through, everything that somebody else has put them through, and be that support and help them navigate through this process. I always, we all actually go by the term that we like to meet our families where they are, and if you don't understand that, then understand that we, as brokers in between, to be a liaison, we have to do intake in shelters. We are dealing with our families who are one in two days sober, because they are trying to manage, they are trying to deal, they're trying to get by. We see the worst of the worst, as Ladonna said. How would you imagine life if somebody is coming in and they're just taking your children from them? You're not going to be baseline, you're going to be frantic, you're going to be upset, you're going to be angry. So, we come in as the calm in their storm, we try to make sure that, you know, you don't see CPS, you don't see all these other acronyms that eventually, you know, they learn about. But you have a team that despise your thoughts, your opinions, or your own experiences. We are a team, and we're really deeply connected into breaking these generational curses that our families have. A lot of what they deal with, it's not that they're bad parents, it's because they've come from their own homes that were torn or traumatized, filled with drugs and abuse and neglect and domestic violence. These are not just families who are bad parents, these are people who have struggled for years and years and years, and they are just trying to survive. So, I just want to say thank you to Ms. Cynthia Van Zant, Ms. Kim Piercing, my program manager, Jason Smith of the Sacramento Children's Home, who's not here, and all of the beautiful minds and souls in the project of Black Child Legacy, who has even given me the opportunity to see that, no matter what, you can really do something for your community, all you have to do is apply and put yourself out there, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board. I have the privilege of being a cultural broker and a cultural broker supervisor of these wonderful young ladies that are here. I'm with Better Life Children Services, and I just wanted to say, so much has already been said, but I wanted to say on a personal basis, that it is a privilege to be able to work in this community, Sacramento community. I've been a member of this community since 1978, and I've never seen anything as wonderful, as integrated, and as collaborative as this. I've had the privilege of working with the Department of, now it's Department of Children and Family Adult Services. Used to be DHS and all that stuff. But when I came to work with Better Life Children Services and working in the cultural broker program, it's been a profound thing for me as a person, and as a person of this community. I take this as a privilege, because actually, what we're doing is we're acting as a bridge between CPS and the family. But one of the things that I think is profound is that we are giving families hope. They're having hope to be able to get their children back, hope to be able to return, and we're trying to give them the skills and the tools that they need, so that they don't have to have their children come back into custody anymore. This Sacramento County Board, you've been bold, you've been brave, you've been supportive, and we want you to continue that with our families, because this is something that is profound, it is something that's needed throughout our nation, because the disparity that exists here exists everywhere, and we really want to let you all know that we thank you for being the standard bearers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, thanks for letting me take just a couple of seconds, I won't keep you very long, I know it's already, we're already running late on time. I just really wanted to make sure we said thank you on behalf of the probation department, you know, particularly at a time when I think you hear this community's supported, it'd be easy for people to stiff-arm law enforcement, and I got some guys that really, you know, wouldn't take that, they'd give you the bear hug, so I want to make sure I give them their just due and allow them a chance to say something.
All right, thank you. Thank you, good evening. It's great to be here, it's a proud moment. I know that we emptied the room out before we decided to come up here, but, you know, it's a proud moment, most of all for the youth and the young people and the engagement that's going on here in the county, as well as the work at the grassroots level, and the vision of Sierra Health Foundation, who has brought together so many layers of, so many layers and so many levels of resources, from folks that have lived experience, that have got involved with the crisis work, as well as empowering and working with the community organizations in the mini-grant capacity. It's just huge work, and we surely appreciate the relationship with them. You know, as a probation department, I have some great officers here, and we definitely have to thank our leadership for being bold enough to stand up and to take on an ethnic-based effort, but based on the data, you know, it's clear that something has to be done. But based on the data, you know, it's clear that something has to be done. And we have delegated some great resources in the form of Deputy Probation Officer Keith Harrison, Senior Deputy Probation Officer John Newsome, Senior Deputy Probation Officer Larry King, and we also have Deputy Probation Officer Kendall Button, who's not here with us right now. But it's definitely an honor, the honor in serving shoulder to shoulder at all levels. And I would say that the proudest moment that I had is working recently, we had a case where I had the privilege to work with the Meadowview site in a case where it was a young man who was going through an expulsion hearing. And we rallied together, put a plan in place, and I had the privilege to be able to call his father, who I supervised many years ago in the gang unit, to actually be part of that solution, and to be able to work and hand off the chemistry of relationship to CIL, you know. And then even the, last week we had a situation just recently, and we're talking about progress in motion as we speak. We were able to take a case that had already been, had the disposition and the recommendation for a young man to be removed from his home. And he was going to go to a placement, a six-month treatment program. Our leadership, the direction of our administrators, we were able to reconvene and sit back together in a room, and really to gain the trust and the endorsement of the other divisions in our probation department, the placement division, as well as the juvenile court division, and to actually come out with a new recommendation that they would endorse the BCLC, and the mentors and all of the case plan that we had put together, they were going to endorse that and allow this young man to come back to the community for another opportunity, you know, to make better decisions. So it's with that, having a proud moment, understanding and being ambitious, just speaking to the recommendation about dealing with third-party homicide. I'm really looking forward to our officers being able to continue to be innovative and develop strategies as a community, to find a way to get the guns out of the hands of our most volatile young people. And I'll tell you what, the statistics that were presented at Black Child Legacy Campaign surely sets the platform for a Mexican Child Legacy Campaign, an Asian Child Legacy Campaign, and a White Child Legacy Campaign, all the demographics and the issues of inequity that still exist in the zip codes that we serve. So thank you for everything you're doing, and you all have a lot to be proud of as well.
Thank you.
Well, I wanted to say something while Marlon was down here.
He's coming back down.
So I just wanted to take the opportunity, Marlon, to thank you personally. You've been with, well, there's been many people in this room that have been with us since the start in 2011, when the board established the Blue Ribbon Commission. But you've been on the Blue Ribbon Commission, the steering committee, you've been there at every single step. So I just want to really commend you and the entire probation team for being just a super-active, productive participant. You can almost, it's real palpable how, personally, I think, you take it, and our POs take it, everyone that's either been part of coming up with the recommendations to budget for different programs, and then to implement, and you guys all deserve a lot of credit for what you do and how you do it.
Truly.
Truly, thank you for that. I appreciate those comments. Yeah, I take it personally, I think the whole team takes it personally, so we're happy to be a part of it.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
We have no more speaker slips. Would board members like to comment? Supervisor Nattoli?
Yep, very briefly, I know the hour's late. I would just say that what we heard here today was certainly delivering on the promise that we, in the hopes that we, I think, embarked upon, certainly with leadership much of it in this room today, but a lot of truth was spoken. And in my view, I think that there's, you know, nothing more important as far as all the facets of this, is that, you know, we're a healthier and hopefully more vibrant community of people, as a couple of the speakers said, and that as a people here in Sacramento County, we, I think, have demonstrated through this effort, through the good work of so many in this room and many that are here today, that, you know, people can achieve great things, great things in the sense that they help people to live and to prosper at any age. And I'm certainly, you know, very pleased to hear the reports here today, and to know that each of us, certainly this dias, had a, you know, a part in that. But the bigger part of it was by the folks out here in the audience who make that difference every day. So again, congratulations. And again, obviously, the work never ends, but I think, as it was said here today, the enthusiasm, the motivation, the spirit that you all bring and the commitment you bring to it is making a tremendous difference, so thanks. And many had to leave, but thank you so much, and makes us all very, very proud.
Supervisor Stern?
Thank you. Yeah, I certainly echo the remarks by Supervisor Nattoli, and I can't, you know, my years on this board, I can't point to another issue or initiative or effort that makes me more proud. There's a lot of them that do make me proud, but man, this is crazy good. And, you know, sometimes I think when you're in elective office and you embark on an initiative, working with the community, and certainly one as complex as this and as serious as this, I think you take some real risks. Not political risks, but risks in setting expectations for the community that can't be met. You see it pretty often, quite frankly, that you have initiatives that fall flat or lose steam, or for whatever reason, they don't get funded, or, you know, there's competing interests. But this has had a trajectory that's been very consistent. It's gotten progressively more effective, almost with each of these report backs to the board. I mean, this is definitely a milestone here in this afternoon, because we're finally really connecting the implementation, the intended implementation of various programs that we've funded both here and through First Five, and actually seeing those early outcomes. And of course, you know, the ultimate objective is to reduce that disparity 10 to 20% by next year. But I think one of the things that I would like to see occur, and I know it's occurring because we've heard it several times from several speakers, is that people are becoming national ambassadors on this issue. When they have a chance to go to conferences across the country, across the state, they're mentioning Sacramento County as a success story. Sacramento County is a progressive community that's willing to tackle something as tough as disproportional child deaths, you know. And, man, that is just something that couldn't make any of us more proud. And to that point, even last week, we had a contingent of folks from the National Association of Counties from Washington DC out here, and they saw a lot of, they were here for a day and a half to see what we're working on here at the county. And of course, county government's very broad, very deep in terms of what we do and how we do it, who we serve. But they were very, very impressed with Black Child Legacy Campaign, actually going out to a birth and beyond site and understand the connections between our family resource centers and much of the work that was explained here today. So I'm just very humbled, very proud, you know, and this is something that cannot, should not, and I know it will not, rest with just one elected body, one elected person, one nonprofit. This is something that has been embraced completely by the community, and that's the most important aspect of the entire effort, is that this is the community's investment in saving our kids. So I just want to thank the community.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you all for being here. This, like I said, there's really no more important work that we do, and we couldn't do it without you, so thank you.
This is just your county executive comments and your board comments.
No comments.
No comments. Any comments from board members?
Very quickly, Mr. Chair, just very quickly. I know we, I wanted to, while Ann Edwards is in the audience, and I wanted to thank Nav and Ann Edwards in the department.
If you could go out a little quieter so we could finish our meeting, that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
I just wanted to express thanks to Department of Human Assistance, to Ann Edwards, to Bruce Wagstaff, to Nav Gill, for working with South County Services. I wasn't here this morning when we took action, but I know they worked, those are lifeline services for rural communities and for people, again, that may have situations that mirror what we heard about today. And I want to just thank them for their work, because I think we finally got it right after about 12 years, so anyway, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Nattoli.
Okay, and with that, thank you all, we're adjourned.